Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Town Council meeting on January 15th, 2013, the first meeting we are holding in the new year, so happy new year to everyone. I would like to just give a couple of announcements as we get started, since we do have some faces that we don't normally see in here. If you could please make sure your cellphones are at least on vibrate, so we don't have any interruptions during the meeting. Also, there are staff reports to your right against the wall, if you haven't already picked those up, to follow along with the agenda this evening. You'll also notice possibly that we have our new tablet devices. We haven't completely transitioned to paperless yet, but it looks like some of the council is at least multitasking with paper and paperless, so if you wonder what those devices are up here, that's what we're trying to transition to completely. So, and thank you to Julie and whomever else in the department, in the office that helped bring this all together. It was only about a year's worth of effort, I think, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you very much. With that, I'll ask that we have a roll call, please.
Okay. Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Mueller?
Here.
Councilmember Doran Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Chilton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. We'll be addressing that issue in just a moment. I do want to acknowledge, we lost a member of our Napa Valley community just last week. The St. Helena Mayor, Del Britton, passed away after battling cancer, so I wanted to recognize his passing and send our condolences and well wishes, not only to his family, but to the St. Helena family as well. I know all of us have worked with Mayor Britton on numerous occasions, and he was really very committed to the St. Helena community and Napa Valley in general, so he will be missed, and I would ask if you'd all join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. With that, if you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with thirty years' justice.
Next up, we are going to go to item four on the agenda, which is the appointment of the Vice Mayor, which was an item continued from our December meeting, since we did not have all of our council here. So, is there a brief staff report before we move ahead on that item?
Mayor, council, technically no, because this is a council action to determine amongst you who will serve the next two-year term as Vice Mayor.
Okay. With that, is there any motion to be offered as to a nominee for that position?
I'll make a motion to reelect Councilmember Vice Mayor Chilton as Vice Mayor.
Second.
Discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you to the council once again.
Oh, you didn't put your...
Oh, I can put that on now.
You can put your Vice Mayor badge back on now.
[laughing]
You didn't jinx yourself after all.
We had the other one printed, right?
All right, we're going to move on. Now, we're going to get a little bit filled with protocol here, folks, so please bear with us. We have several hats that we're wearing tonight beyond just the Town Council. We have three successive meetings that we'll be calling here. They will probably go fairly quickly, and they'll seem somewhat repetitive, but we do need to deal with some of these items. So, we're going to recess the Town Council meeting to the Yountville Housing Authority Annual Meeting, and I will invite roll call for that meeting.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Mueller?
Here.
Councilmember Doran Becker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. So, what I will offer now is public comment. That would be in our role as the housing authority. If there's anything that anyone would like to discuss that's not on our housing authority agenda, now would be the time to do that. We are still going to have time to have public comment in our regular Town Council session. So, seeing no one move forward on that, we'll move ahead to the election of officers for the Yountville Housing Authority. And similar situation in terms of no real staff report, but...
Correct. Traditionally, the Chair and Vice Chair of the Housing Authority have been the Mayor and Vice Mayor, but that is up to the discretion of the Town Council.
So, is there any action to be offered?
Would you like a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we elect Mayor Dunbar to Chair and Vice... Vice Mayor Chilton to Vice Chair of the Yountville Housing Authority Meeting... Association. What is this?
Authority.
Authority, thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We will move on to...
Comment.
Yes, would you like me to comment about that?
I would, please. I would just like to commend Kathleen Dreessen and the Napa Valley Community Housing for the award for the Arroyo Grande Housing by the National Affordable Housing Management Association, and thank them for what they are doing in managing our housing.
Thank you. We have a consent calendar for the Housing Authority, two items. Is there any discussion or action on those two items?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We just had, I think, our one report. Are there any other reports or comments?
No additional reports.
And I see no public hearings for scheduled items, so I'll offer...
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to the Yountville Finance Authority Annual Meeting, and I think we can stipulate that all officers are present for the roll call. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of November 20 and December 4 of 2012?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Again, there's an opportunity for public comment with the Yountville Finance Authority, if anyone would like to do that. Seeing no one, we'll move on to the election of officers for the Finance Authority. Again, I think...
Same report.
Standard thing. We're getting used to it. Is there a motion to be had here?
I will move that we elect as President Mayor Dunbar, and elect as Vice President Vice Mayor Chilton.
Second.
Now, before we move on, I'm looking at our... Do we have to recognize all of the positions listed here, or is it just for our Chair and Vice Chair?
Just for the Chair and Vice Chair, the others followed by position title.
Very good. So, there's a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And it looks like, are there any reports related to the Finance Authority?
Yes, they are. Under number eight, I would like to introduce Jeff White with Columbia Capital, who is the Town and the Yountville Finance Authority's Financial Advisor, and he is here to share, and it's very hard for me to not tip where we're going, but we've got very, very favorable results of today's bond sale, and I'll let Jeff introduce and share the good news.
So, point of order, are we on the consent calendar, or...
No, you're in number eight Finance Authority reports.
We have not actually done the consent calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, yeah. That's how excited you were about this report.
Yes, that's how excited I am.
Not excited, but you've...
But thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Would you like to...
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I bet you all know what's coming next. And thank you. So, this is a very special occasion for the Finance Authority, so welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, or should I say, Mr. President, members of the Authority Board, my name's Jeff White with Columbia Capital Management. It's been our privilege and honor to serve as the Town's and the Finance Authority's Financial Advisor for this financing. And I guess I'd open by quoting the immortal words of Hannibal Smith on The A-Team, "I love it when a plan comes together." We started talking last fall about an approach to offering bonds for the two projects that will be financed with the proceeds of the bonds that were in the market today. One of those was, or is, the seismic retrofitting of the building we're standing in, and the second one is Street Sewer Projects, just up the street here. We talked about with the ad hoc committee and with staff about a recommendation to do a competitive sale, which is an analog to a sealed bid, and to structure the bonds in such a way to avoid a debt service reserve fund, which is a relatively expensive technique in today's market, where you borrow money at the bond rate, you put it in an investment account at next to nothing, and then that money comes back out. Those funds are available to the bondholders should they be needed over time, and we structured the bonds to avoid that, to avoid that cost. And I'm very pleased to report that in our sale today, that we had four bidders for the bonds, with the winner being Morgan Stanley, producing an effective cost of funds at just less than 2.8%, which is outstanding. When we modeled the financing based upon municipal market rates as of late last week, as late as Friday, based upon other transactions that were in the market, we expected an overall funds rate of about 3.1%. So, we were absolutely thrilled with the result that came out today. That produces an annual lease payment of around $360,000 a year between the Town and the Finance Authority. The council approved lease rates up to a half million dollars a year, so a pretty significant savings compared to that. We started to see municipal market conditions turn against us pretty significantly in December. Between Thanksgiving and Christmas, we saw municipal interest rates increase by more than three tenths of a percent, and some of that was just due to an incredible amount of municipal supply in the market. Some of that was due to worries about the fiscal cliff. The markets settled down after the temporary fix to the fiscal cliff earlier this month, and... But this is really the first real week we've had in the market with any sort of significant supply, about $5 billion in projected supply for this week. So, we gained back probably between 10 and 15 basis points, so almost half of what the markets gave up in December over the last few weeks, which was nice for us, and we sold into a very strong market. The... I'm really pleased with this outcome, again, because we were able to structure the bonds without that debt service reserve fund, which is expensive, and also, really importantly, a call provision that is significantly shorter than the industry standard. Your 2008 bonds, for instance, like most bonds, are sold with a 10-year call, meaning you can call them or refinance them starting in 2018. We sold the bonds today with timing that lines up with those 20... with the 2008 bonds, so the call on these bonds is also 2018, significantly shorter than what is typical in the market. Normally, in a negotiated transaction, you might pay two tenths of a percent for that privilege, and based upon the rates today, I don't think we paid any penalty for that at all, which is nice. So, one thing that I found particularly interesting, you can see the four bidders listed there, Morgan Stanley, which bid from its San Francisco desk, RBC, which bid from its San Francisco desk, but two of my very old friends that I see on almost every transaction we work on in the Midwest, Hutchinson Shaki, which is a Chicago broker dealer, and Stiefel Nicholas, which is a venerable St. Louis institution, rounded out the bidders today. So, all in all, I'm thrilled. I really do think that all the planning and thought that went into the structure of this transaction really came today, and it's not always that good things happen to good people, but definitely transpired today. So, we've got the closing documents actually well underway, and everything's on track to have funds in your hand on the 5th of February. So, that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Does the council have any questions about the bond sale or process going forward? Seeing that, I do want to just invite, is there anyone in the audience that has a question about what we're talking about here? Basically, we're paying to seismically retrofit this facility, which has been, you know, many, many years in the making to get to this point of financing this, as well as so much-needed improvements on Yount Street and Madison. So, this is a... It's kind of a big deal for us. We don't do this very often, and to have such a favorable outcome is really quite exceptional. So, seeing no one else that had any specific questions, thank you very much. I enjoyed sealing... seeing the smile on your face throughout your report.
[laughing] Indeed.
And I know the Town Manager and our Finance Director have been smiling as well, so...
Congratulations, and thank you very much for your hospitality and the opportunity to work for the Town. It's been great.
And are you going to actually give us a check on the 5th?
Unfortunately, everything is done by wire these days, so you'll just have to... You'll have to feel the warm glow of seeing the bank balance increase. Maybe Kathleen can pull the cash report that day for you.
We might have to print out that.
I'll confirm when funds are received.
Thank you. Great. Thank you very much.
Jeff, I just want to say real quick, thank you on behalf of myself and Richard for making us look good. So, this worked out as well, if not better, and I think you managed our expectations on, so thank you very much.
Happy to do it. Thanks.
Thanks.
Some real tangible news there in our Finance Authority. Anybody want to follow that up with a staff report or comments on account of the Authority? I don't think so. With that, I'll be open for a motion for adjournment to our next Authority.
So adjourn?
Second.
We're so moved, isn't it?
Oh, sorry. So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Not often we can say we just made four-plus million dollars. We're going to now move on to our Yountville Parking Authority Annual Meeting. A lot of pressure on the Parking Authority to come through with something interesting.
[laughing]
Again, we'll stipulate to the roll call, and I will move on to election of officers. We have this down pretty well, I think. Is there a motion for...
I'll move that the Mayor will be elected Chair, and the Vice Mayor will be elected Vice Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We have two items on our consent calendar. Is there any discussion or action on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks very much. Do we have any staff reports for the Parking Authority?
No additional reports.
Okay, no future agenda items. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, we got through that. Now, we're back to our regularly-scheduled programming with the Town Council. Do we have any closed session report?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I now invite a motion to adopt tonight's agenda. Are there any corrections or changes to the agenda, or is there a motion to be had?
I have one correction, and it's under item number 16D under WIT. That particular committee is actually chaired, or our representative there is Councilmember Doran Becker, not Councilmember Hall. That's...
Very good.
You guys thought I only looked at numbers.
And as long as we're on item 16, I also attended the Upper Napa Valley Waste Management Authority, and that's not on there, so we can add that.
Yeah, and I would certainly invite any reports that aren't listed here. This is kind of a standard setup, I think, but now that I say that, don't let me forget, Councilmember Mueller, to call on you for that. Okay, is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
Motion to adopt is amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now, we have public comment for the Town Council. If there's anyone that would like to speak on anything, any item that's not listed on our Town Council agenda for tonight, you would be welcome to bring that forward. Seeing no one here in the audience, I do want to recognize that we were sent an email meant for the public comment portion of tonight, and it is from resident Eric Knight. And to paraphrase his letter, he is encouraging the Yountville Town Council to pass a resolution addressed to the Napa County Board of Supervisors and our state and federal elected representatives that supports more discussion and proactive efforts to reduce gun violence. Recently, this was inspired, he said, he read Congressman Mike Thompson's request to the Napa County Board of Supervisors to support his efforts, and our Congressman Thompson is the Chair of that federal subcommittee. He goes on to speak about the arguments for and against, and I just want to allow his email to be put in the record as a public comment. We don't take action on items brought up in public comment, but we will certainly... And I've already responded to Mr. Knight, as I believe our Town Manager has as well, so we'll follow up on that item at a later date. Any other topics for public comment? Seeing none others, we'll move on from public comment to our Town Council consent calendar. We do have A, B, C, let's see, through G. Are there any items for discussion, or is there a motion to adopt our consent calendar?
I'll move to adopt the consent calendar.
Or, I'm sorry, only A, B, and C.
B, C.
A, B and C.
Turned two pages over. So, there's a motion to adopt the consent calendars, or second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That is unanimously approved. Now, we are to our presentations, and I do not see our first representative for our first presentation from the California Veterans Home Allied Council, but I do see our second presenter is here, representing the entire California Veterans Home, the Administrator, Commander Marcella McCormick. Welcome.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor, for inviting me. It's a pleasure to see you again. Ed can't be here, but the only thing he had is that there's a delegates election the end of the month, so the delegates that represent the buildings will be having an election. There are currently only two where there's more than one candidate, so... But they're working very hard on that, and I know it's taking a lot of time up on the election. There, the delegates are elected on the opposite year that the Chair and the Vice Chair and the delegate at large are done. So, this year is only delegates, and next January will be the Chair and the Vice Chair. The census of the home is 1,001. We're at 98% occupancy at this time. We continue to admit to all levels of care. We have some vacancies in our memory care center. We have vacancies in our assisted living, so we are still actively taking applications on that. We had the Napa Solano County Consortium of Veterans Groups in this morning, and again told them that we're still actively taking applications for those areas. We have some new staff that have come on recently. We picked up Mr. Bill Davis, who's our new Vet Rep. We promoted internally Michael Bunch, so we picked up Bill Davis, who's doing a great job. Karen Zanatell, who's been a longtime resident, we promoted her to our Director of Residential Programs, and she's doing just an excellent job, so we're happy with Karen. We have a new Director of Plan Operations, Mr. Joe Rogers. He comes from the Parks Division of the State, so we're happy to have a lot of new energy and input from Joe. We've had just a lot of retirements in our Plan Ops Department. Bill Hargis and Hank Miller, a lot of our 35- and 32-year-old people who have been here that long are retiring. And we also added a new SNIF Administrator, is Ms. Monica Diaz from over in Sonoma. Her husband's a Vet from Air Force. He's out now, went to school, but she's just a ball of dynamite. She's by way of Puerto Rico, and we're doing great things with Monica, so we're really excited by that. We had a nice event on Thursday with Mayor Dunbar and the other Mayors chairing the opening of the Lincoln Theater and getting it back on its feet. Although, the county did a lot, a significant amount of credit on the state side should go to the Undersecretary, Robin Umberg. She marched over a whole lot of state regulations and state rules to get the theater back open, and so she's my boss, and I'd just like to publicly thank Robin for really, you know, the state has a lot of rules, and Robin was able to clear all of those rules and got the agreement signed, and so she's terrific to work for, and that's really excellent. I will be starting my House meetings again. I go to all 13 locations, sometimes twice during the day. I really like to talk with the members versus just that one time at Allied Council, so it takes me... wears me out sometimes, but I get to all 13 different locations. On the Plan Operations side, we continue to install our new fire alarm upgrade system that were... took us $3 million, and even in the state's tight fiscal times, they realized the importance of that, so we've got two buildings done, and we've got five more to go, so it's a $3 million project that we're working on. We're also going to fix some roofs. We noticed, starting in the fall, that we had some leaks, so we've... we're scoping some roofs. Some of our flat roofs are leaking. We're there. We're doing a huge ADA compliance in front of Holderman. If you see in front of Holderman, it's all dug up. The trees are gone, the bricks are gone. It's all going to be ADA accessible, and we're adding the required number of ADA accessible parking spots to Holderman's. So, we know that our population has a lot of mobility devices, and we should be working with those. Two projects are working on for food services, an ice builder. We do cook-chill in there, so we're... We cook the food, and then we chill it down, and then we serve it in the different locations that we have. We're getting a new cook-chiller, and also we're changing out the system right now for the members who are in memory care center Holderman and Eisenhower. Because they're on therapeutic diets, they'll get their diet served to what their diet is, and we do it on trays. So, that system is now 15 years old. We spec'd, and we have a new system coming in, so we're excited about installing that new system there. We also are getting, the members are pretty excited, a new Socks Fifth Avenue. We have a... an old trailer that serves as their clothing store, and it's very popular. Many of them do not have money for clothing and do not have access to get down there, so the trailer was old. We've done a seven-year lease, so out goes the old trailer, in comes the new trailer, and that'll be good for them. Currently, they have a small location, so. Member Services Building is working well. We have bowling, the Wellness Center, the gym. We had a wonderful holiday season, and we're gearing up for Super Bowl parties and Oscar parties and things like that, so... And that concludes our report, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions about Commander's report, Vice Mayor?
Hi, Marcella.
Hi.
I have one question that someone asked me that I didn't know the answer to that had to do with bowling. Is bowling available for members only, or is it available for a larger amount of the public? What's the bowling situation?
We went from a kind of manual system, where we're still using grease pencils, to this super-duper computer system. And although our plans in the future call for a greater community integration and bringing families in, we're still figuring out the computer system. So, for right now, we're just... We've gone from two days to four days, and we are expanded the hours to more on each day, and as we get better, then we'll start doing that. We would like to start doing leagues again. I know we had the children from the daycare program up there, but right now, we've got to figure out our system before we invite a whole lot more people in there, so... But we've got a lot of... We've got brand-new shoes that are beautiful. They're all Velcro, no more ties on the shoes, and we've got a whole new set of bowling balls that are... They're orange, and they're purple, and they're green, and they're blue, but we have no black balls, so, as you come in there. But we just need to get better at our technology before we start using it as often as that, because we're still finding some computer glitches, and we're working the people through them to make sure that they can clear those computer glitches. When you had the grease pencil and you just wrote on it, you just erased, but now you've got to be able to clear the system, clear the pins, clear the whole brain, and start over if you have another player, and we're just working through that.
So, patience.
Yeah. It's a... We bought an advanced system, you know, as long as we were going to do it, we did it right, but, you know, it is more difficult than it was before. It's not a simple system, but as we use it more. Yes, we want to invite also our employees back in. We had a very active and very wonderfully warm thing, where our staff members played with the members on Friday, and it was a great time. So, we're working towards that too, but right now, we're still testing it.
Thank you.
And not to speak out of turn to follow up on that, but there may be some folks in our community that can help with the training or teaching of the new system to the members also, so certainly keep that in mind with reaching out either through our parks and community services, or just through the town staff. We can try to get some people to help out with it.
I'll let Karen Zanatell know that, then. She's working on it, but it's beautiful, so it's really nice and things, so...
Great, thank you. And thank you for coming in and giving us this report, and we certainly welcome when Chair Olson and the Allied Council come and keep us updated on what's happening as well, so...
Right, thank you.
Thanks very much. Next up, Cal Fire Public Safety Quarterly Report. Welcome, and we have a special stand-in tonight.
Good evening. My name is Barry Beerman. I'm the Battalion Chief of Napa County Fire Department, Cal Fire, the Yountville Station, and your local Battalion Chief here for the Town. Tonight's quarterly report will cover the months of October, November, and December. We ran a total of 345 calls out of the Yountville Fire Station, which is a pretty significant amount of calls. It seemed to be going up over the last couple years. The majority of the calls, as in any fire service, is medical-related. As you can see, 219 calls were medical aids. The next significant call volume we had was for our alarm soundings, which a majority of the time are false alarms, but, you know, now and then they do end up being a fire. A lot of facilities, including the Town, is ... are working on trying to, you know, improve systems to make sure we don't get those false calls. systems to make sure we don't get those false calls. Down out of all those calls, the Town of Yountville ran a total of 76 calls here within the town, 143 of them ran up to the Veterans Home, and 123 calls were out in the county service area that we service. Major events, we had one significant accident on Highway 29 down by Oak Knoll that happened a while back in November, where we had a wrong-way driver on the highway, we had multiple victims, multiple cars requiring extrication, and brought in engines from other stations, as well as Napa City to assist with that. Special events that we're doing, the annual toy drive went on again this year, it's spearheaded out of the Yountville Station, very active in that program, it's really a year-round toy drive, where we're, we're getting stuff in throughout the year to help needy children throughout the county, and that basically really comes to fruition during the month of November and December, so they were pretty active in that, at one point, the fire station really wasn't much of a place to sit down in there, they had so many toys in there that they were able to give out a lot of them through the holidays. We had the annual Chiefs Dinner, Firefighter of the Year for the Napa County Fire Department, that's where we honor one volunteer firefighter from each of the nine volunteer companies that Napa County's a part of, as well as the paid firefighter of the year, that dinner is held annually at the station. The station does a lot, it seems like it's a focal point where we do a lot of activities to include these dinners, we've got some pretty outstanding cooks there, and we seem to get those requests to come back and put on some of these events, so it's a well-received. Participate in the Yountville Days Parade, what else is in here? Festival of Lights, Turkey Trotts, there's a lot of activities that go on at a fire station besides just running calls and cleaning the equipment and stuff, they're really engaged out of this firehouse, I worked here for nine years as a fire captain, so I know how busy it can be there, but they really do, do a great service, I think, to this community by going out and, and doing all these charitable events, and anything, anything they're asked to do, they really try to step it up, and it's just an active year for them, and they really enjoy doing it. We did some fire extinguisher training, which we do for the local wineries or somewhere that's, that's called upon, the crew will go out there and actually teach a group of people how to safely use a fire extinguisher. Something else, you know, we have an aerial truck and a fire engine that runs out of the Yountville Firehouse, we also have our new rescue that we received here in the last year or so, and it's part of the technical rescue team for the County of Napa, is stationed out of that, that station, the equipment's there, the majority of the personnel that work there are part of this technical rescue team, they participated in the Urban Shield Exercise in October down in San Francisco Bay Area, it was a two-day exercise, multiple, multiple teams from all over the Bay Area, and they ended up finishing second in that, that drill scenario that went on, so that was a pretty good achievement. We did some fire drill at the Yountville Elementary School, there was Kewana's Luncheon that was held. Upcoming events, we have the Volunteer Fire Academy for the Napa County Fire Department starting, a lot of the employees that work at the firehouse there are actively engaged with helping instruct, and are integral part of that academy, and that'll be coming up here, starting shortly. The run summary that you guys can see on the last page includes the fact that Yountville had a total of the 76 calls, 54 of them were medical aides. I think some of the good things are is that there were no vehicle accidents within the town that we responded to, we only had two alarm soundings within the town, we had one structured fire, but nothing else substantial as far as calls go, the majority of the calls end up being the medical aides. And that's it, are there any questions?
Any questions from Council?
I do have a couple, I wanna share a footnote, recently, as you know, we had two major storm events with some significance, and I'm very pleased to report that Barry and all of the crew at Station 12 were active in helping the town in our storm preparation. In addition, they had crews out on patrol, they know how to call me at 4:00 in the morning, as well as our public works, but we really had a coordinated effort where their additional eyes and ears, when resources came in, they also were prepared and had deployed, had a swift water rescue team. In addition, as some of our residents know, we've utilized for our first time in recent history, the reverse 91, the reverse 911 call system where we are able to send messages out to our residents to let them know of rising river levels and some things like that, and it's a hard thing to put in a report like this, but it really is, I think, indicative of the kind of coordination that happens with the town public, our, the town manager's office, public works crew, and both the firefighters in the field, and also the upcoming public safety, because that's our under-field crew. In addition, I did receive a phone call early one morning from the Mayor as he was leaving town, but, you know, we only have about, in that point in time, a collective of about six personnel on the field at a, at, you know, 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, so it's an important thing, and we know how to communicate and, and get together, and I just wanted to stress that, that's a good working experience, and Barry's experience was helpful, especially as we had some rotating Battalion Chiefs in that, and they all stepped up, kept us in good communications, and were prepared to do more as need be. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, I did just wanna ask one question, maybe it's, it may or may not be a fair question for you to answer, but it has to do with the ambulance service, and people may have noticed that AMR now stations, it looks like, right down at California Drive, have you noticed, I would assume, a rapid response, but can you maybe speak to the strategy for that? So people are maybe curious, why is the ambulance sitting there every day?
Well, I think if you look at, at the call volume alone, the Vets Home had a total of 127 medical aides during these three months, their, their medical call volume is increasing there, and so I think that AMR's intention is to, basically, they have a computer-based program that, you know, kinda predicts where these calls are gonna be, and it's kinda obvious that they're getting the call volume up in Yountville, particularly the Vets Home, but it also serves the, the town as well, so, based on that, whenever possible, they try to get that ambulance available up in the Yountville area, which benefits all of us, I think it's particularly being driven by the high call volume that's going on at the Vets Home, but, you know, I think that's basically the reason for that, and I think that they're also looking at, you know, it's been a year now that AMR's been here, and so, I know their General Manager was kinda looking at the general, getting their own data on the call volume that's going on in this county, and there can be some adjustments that are, are made to maybe where those priorities are, and I think that's the kinda stuff you're starting to see, is they're seeing that, you know, that they are busy coming up here, and, you know, the senior ambulance, or I think if you live within a town, it's a good thing to see someone so close and available.
Right, great, thank you very much for that.
You bet.
Thanks for the report.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to our last presentation of the evening, our Sheriff's Department Public Safety Quarterly Report. Welcome, Cal.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Council. My name's Cal Valenti, for those of you who don't know me, and I'll be presenting the report over the quarter of dealing with October through December of last year, it was prepared by Sergeant Wilkinson, who unfortunately was not able to attend, and I apparently am his regular stand-in. There were two major events over the town during the last quarter, October was Yountville Days, and December was Festival of Lights, there were no significant law enforcement problems or traffic issues during the events, there were no arrests or misdemeanor citations. The Sheriff's Department and the volunteer groups, which include the Posse and Arrow Squadron, participated in special events throughout the year, and assisted with security and traffic control. Deputy Zimmerman is teaching there at Yountville Elementary, Lieutenant Belmer, who was here supervising the town previously, he participated this year at the Cook Off, the Chili Cook Off, and I think he received the People's Choice Award, he's still trying to obtain the higher award, good luck for him next year. The Sheriff's Department also hosted National Night Out Event at the Community Center, I think that was the first time they did that this year. Crime trends, I think the report covered also a lot comparing it to last year, 2011, excuse me, I guess the year, previous year. A general increase was noted in reported activities for 2012 from the previous year, total number of calls for service in 2012 increased by approximately 26.5 percent from the previous year, crimes against persons increased by 40 percent, majority of crimes, the majority of people crimes were simple assaults involving people who knew each other, there were three incidents involving complete strangers. Property crimes increased 15 percent from the previous year, the number of arrests increased by 19.4 percent, the number of violent crimes remained low, with only one robbery and three assaults involving weapons. Calls for service at the Veterans Home account for 14.5 percent, the calls for service. The highlighted case for this quarter occurred on October 29th, a Yountville resident was stopped by a deputy for a routine traffic violation, during the stop, the deputy located a significant amount of marijuana in the suspect's vehicle, further investigation led to a search of the suspect's home, where it was discovered that he was also in possession of material indicating he was engaged in sale of marijuana. The suspect was arrested and charged with multiple crimes related to drug distribution. Fortunately, that's a case that's unusual for the town. Traffic enforcement and collision, traffic collisions increased from 13 in 2012 to 17, no, 13 in 2011 to 17 in 2012, there were four injury accidents, there were no fatalities. Collisions appeared to occur in random locations indicating no specific problem areas, 11 of the 17 collisions involved a single vehicle into a stationary object, such as hitting a parked vehicle or post. The majority of the collisions were due to driver inattention. Of the four injury accidents, two drivers reported falling asleep, one accident involved a pedestrian who was running across Washington Street, and two accidents were alcohol-related. A concerted effort was made to conduct direct traffic enforcement, resulting in an increase to issued citations to 447 in 2012 compared to 320 in 2011. And that concludes the report, I can try to handle any questions if you have any.
Any questions about the report? No spikes of trouble for New Year's Eve, New Years at all?
No, I looked at the log for, for New Year's Eve, and there was a report of a fight in the parking lot of Vintage 1870, or Bee Market now, and I believe the parties were gone by the time the deputies arrived.
Great.
Just a couple things to share with the town council, the fact that our numbers are up for incidents does not necessarily indicate a negative trend, but I do wanna remind you, in our most recent contract, we went to four designated officers as opposed to three, so there, you would expect, hopefully, knock on wood, that there'd be more increased officer activity, so, and with that, our focus has been at the council's request and by most of our residents until they get caught for increased traffic and enforcement and monitoring, so, when you really look at the statistics, those bear those two, that's why, yes, it looks like our calls for service have really gone up, but when you realize, many of our calls for service are education, and not necessarily resulting in a completely negative occurrence to the parties.
True, yes.
And we'll certainly put a little pressure on Sergeant Wilkinson to come in and give his own report.
I'll help you with that, thank you.
Thanks very much. That's, takes cares, takes care of our presentations for this evening, we're gonna move right on to our one public hearing for tonight, and that relates to Tucker's Larder, a Use Permit Amendment, Design Review, Master Sign Plan Amendment for 6488 Washington Street, and I know we have at least one conflict and possibly some disclosures as well. Vice Mayor, did you?
Sure. I will not be participating in this item due to the potential competitive nature with the business I own at 6498 Washington Street, the Yountville Deli, and because of the heightened rules based on the 500-foot rule that do come into play, so I will not participate.
Thank you very much. Yes, I was just waiting until Vice Mayor leaves, somebody's not part of the discussion, then I'll ask for disclosures from the Council. Councilmember Dornbecker, I know you're itching to give your disclosure.
I'm trying to do the best I can. I wish to disclose that I have met with the applicant who wants to review his concept, and I had no other contacts on this matter.
Any other disclosures, or?
I have one.
Councilmember Hall.
I've consulted with the town attorney, and he's advised me that while the discussion on this application and wine tasting rooms in general, within the Town of Yountville, have no direct impact upon my operations of my employer, Cliff Lady Vineyards, to the extent there may be indirect impacts upon my employer, these economic impacts are not significant enough under the regulations, the FPPC, to result in my disqualification. At this time, I'd like to participate, but I'm required to disclose that I'm employee of Cliff Lady Vineyards, serving as its VP of Finance.
Thank you very much. I think we're in a position to proceed with this item. Staff report, please.
Tonight you have before you a Use Permit Amendment, and it relates both to Tucker's Larder Proposed New Business and Somerson Wine Tasting Room, and I'll be discussing the changes in those use permits separately. The first is for Tucker's Larder, and the core use that is requested is essentially the same as the previously-approved grocery deli for the site, and it consists of the retail sale of food items, those are both pre-made and made-to-order, and there's a menu in each of your packets, it'll include the sale of beverages, coffees, and ice creams. It's based on a self-service model where customers order at the register and pay for their goods at the same time, and pick up the made-to-order items at the counter. Food can either be taken to go or consumed at any of the onsite open space areas, and the grocery deli was approved under the town's general retail standards, since that time, we've adopted new definitions, and one of those is for a limited-service restaurant, and it's more specific to the different food type uses, and that is a restaurant where food is prepared onsite for consumption by the customer either on or off the premises, customers order from the counter, they pay for the food at the time it's ordered, and food is typically served in disposable containers or packaged for transportation off-site. These businesses may hold a Type 41 ABC license, and that license authorizes the sale of beer or wine for consumption either on or off the premises. The lands, or, excuse me, the limited-service restaurant applies the same parking standard as the general retail commercial standard, and so the, the site is compliant as to parking and the existing parking lot, the consumption of food, and even the placement of the barbecue in the courtyard, which I'll discuss a little later, doesn't impact the site's open space, and so these basic components of the use haven't changed, and they're fully consistent with the approval. So I wanna talk about what's different about this proposal tonight for Tucker's Larder. One is a change in the proposed hours of operation in order to open earlier at 7:00 a.m., and that's in order to, to get the breakfast crowd, but they are proposing closing at 10:00 a.m., and the grocery deli was approved for a closure at 10:00 p.m. I do want to note the open space standards, and to be consistent with the earlier approvals, and that's the Somerson, the Thursday Night Live series, and the earlier approval for this space, they all, and because of concerns about noise, the open space use by the businesses was limited to dark in the winter and 9:00 p.m. in the summer, and we're suggesting a continuation of that condition for consistency. Wine and beer, oh, I could go through these, I, I got distracted. These are the open space areas, and it shows the courtyard in the rear where food and wine could be consumed, and this is an illustration of the terrace, and these are photos of the terrace, and that's the, the site layout of the different food cases, the beverage counter, the coffee, and where you can get ice cream. And there's also a new ice cream service window so that customers can approach directly without entering the store. With regards to beer and wine, the applicant is requesting this component of the use under the, the option to hold a the option to hold a type forty-one license for sale of beer and wine for consumption on or off the premises. ABC approval is required for this, and they have some rather stringent licensing requirements for the business control of the site. As proposed, under the self-service model of the business, it would allow the customer to bring a bottle of beer or a glass, half-bottle, or bottle of wine into any of the open space areas for consumption. And this shows the stairwell to the terrace, and you can see that the sign on the left says that there's no alcohol consumption permitted up there, and that was a condition for the wine tasting room because of the nature of wine tasting and the small amounts poured. That is something that can be changed under the proposal before you tonight. We are proposing a condition of approval that the use and its impacts be reviewed after six months of operation, and so consumption of beer and use of the open space areas can be some of the issues that we're looking at. Another change requested by the applicant is the request to place a barbecue, shown here on the left-hand side, in the courtyard, and the barbecue would serve two purposes. One, to support the daily use of grilling meats and vegetables that serve as the basic ingredient in the different food dishes, but also on an occasional basis for cooking demonstrations that would occur up to once per month, and these would be open to the public and free of charge. This shows the location in the courtyard, and the location of the fountain that would be removed, and the proposed barbecue would be situated. This looks down on the proposed area. And one of the issues related to the barbecue relates to FAR, and that's because it's a core component of the use that's not enclosed within the four walls of the building, but rather it would be located in the courtyard, in an area that was not previously counted as FAR. However, in staff's opinion, we view this as de minimis. It has a footprint of approximately eighteen square feet. It doesn't eliminate any required open space on the site, and it doesn't result in an increase in any enclosed building mass. So, staff can lend its support to the placement of the barbecue in the courtyard, provided that any foods grilled out there are brought into the kitchen for incorporation into dishes and distributed from inside the building, and that other support functions aren't brought out into the courtyard adjacent to the barbecue. Smoke and odors issues are another potential factor with the barbecue, although hopefully they're going to smell really good, like it hurleys when we're walking by. And it's really not expected to result in any significant negative impacts. The venting of the barbecue is direct at the top of the unit at an elevation of about nine feet. It's also adjacent to this building that doesn't have any openings or other openings that could be affected by smoke or odor issues. And it's also set distant from the adjacent residential by the length of the parking lot and a portion of the courtyard. It, however, may still prove to be an issue, and this would be one issue that we would look at during the six-month review to see if there are any significant impacts that need to be mitigated after the business has been up in operation. Another new proposed component of the use is for catering, and it's to supply the catered food for Somersden's special events and/or catering of off-site special events. And as a reminder, Somersden is permitted for twenty-four special events plus sixteen Thursday Night Live events. In this business, which is in close proximity, could serve as a catering kitchen, and it may reduce reliance on the, on outside vendors or perhaps even food trucks, but it is consistent with the approval for catering at Somersden. Off-site catering is another option, and staff's only concern is with the delivery van that the applicant proposes storing in the onsite lot. And both of the uses onsite here, Somersden, and this proposed use would meet the minimum parking requirement, so there isn't an extra stall to store a van on a long-term basis. So, we've suggested a condition that it be stored off-site. The last aspect of the proposed use is the holding of special events that are specific to Tucker's Larder, and this modification has perhaps the biggest impact on the site. I'll provide a little bit of the site history. Somersden, as I noted, is approved for special events. Those are for twenty minor special events, up to twenty-five people, and for major special events for up to fifty people. These are defined as private parties or events. They also are entitled to up to sixteen Thursday Night Live outdoor summer music events, and these are open to the public. And when we conducted a six-month review of that use, and that was based on the reporting standard that that Somersden has held to most recently, we learned that they held two minor special events and only twelve of the sixteen Thursday Night Live events. So, they're, they're holding fewer than they are entitled for, but that's natural as a business explores the different ways that they can operate. So, the proposal here is to add special events for Tucker's Larder that would be consistent of twelve minor special events, six major special events, and six guest chef dinner special events. These would all be private events that are booked in advance with attendance known. They could be sit-down lunches or dinners that include service, receptions, cocktail gatherings, or other group gatherings. The focus of these special events would be on food and wine, and they would allow Tucker's Larder to go above and beyond the typical operation of the core use that they conduct daily, and that would occur on these twenty-four occasions maximum during the year. There are several issues staff wants to discuss, and one of those is whether these special events where they're serving sit-down dinners is a way around being, around the prohibition on full-service restaurants in this zoning district. And we note that the service dinners act a lot like restaurant-type service. However, they're limited, as I noted, to a maximum of twenty-four times per year. They're private events that are booked in advance, and they are not intended for, nor would they be allowed to be used by just daily general customer base of Tucker's Larder. So, in staff's opinion, given the number of events and the fact that they're private, it's consistent with the requirement that special events must be accessory to the primary use in this case, the retail food operation conducted as a limited-service restaurant. They're also consistent with the rules for commercial usable open space that allows the exclusive use of an open space areas by a business on an intermittent or irregular basis, and the examples usually given are seasonal or evening use, and we believe the twenty-four event limitation satisfies that standard as well. Another issue is the potential functionality of the site, especially if Tucker's Larder is to remain open during these special events. But since Tucker's Larder is based on a to-go model, it conceptually could work where customers pick up their things and go while special events are being held in the open space areas. The largest impact would come from special events that are large and that use all or most of the site's open space areas. And in these occasions, it may be likely that Tucker's Larder needs to close. We were leaving this decision open to the operator at this time to see how the functioning of these events works. I will note two conditions of approval that we are requesting for the special events, and one is the reporting of these special events, so we understand the size and the nature of the event, and we can include any conditions to mitigate potential impacts prior to holding the event. And that's worked well since we've conditioned Somersden on reporting the specifics of events. And once again, we're requesting, requiring a six-month review of the use to look at any significant impacts. Another potential issue is the sheer number of events for the site and impact on the site, given the fact that sixty-four events between the two businesses could occur over the course of the year, especially where these are likely to be grouped into a short time period over the summer months, and the potential for both businesses to hold special events. So, we've included conditions that no more than two events occur per week, and that the business businesses be prohibited from holding an event at the same date and time, and that should limit the impact of the events. That whole discussion related to Tucker's Larder and the scope of their proposed use. I'm now going to discuss the proposed changes to the Somersden use permit. Somersden is requesting permission to avail itself of catered wine and food pairings that are prepared by Tucker's Larder, and I'll refresh your memories as to the site history. In February of 2010, Somersden requested the onsite preparation of catered food pairings as part of the application to establish a wine tasting lounge on the property. That application was denied, and the onsite food service was, was part of that denial. Thereafter, they modified their application, and in April 2010 submitted an application for the grocery deli that was approved in the Tucker's Larder space, former space. And as part of that approval, they had sought permission to have catered wine and food pairings from the grocery deli, and that was deleted from the scope of the approval when the council approved the grocery deli. Since that time, the town has established a new definition for wine tasting room, and it specifically permits wine, wine and food pairings, but there are limitations on the food pairing use. It's that it is secondary to the wine tasting use, that the food is ancillary, that the food is not prepared onsite, and that approval is granted from Department of Environmental And in this case, the applicant indicates there will be small bites that are specifically created to complement the qualities of the wine, that there will be only one option per wine and no menu options, and that'll be secondary to the wine use. But staff does note that the options on the draft menu that you have for wine and food pairing are very similar to appetizers at restaurants. And while there won't be menu options, there is somewhat a blurring of the line between wine tasting rooms and restaurants that is up for your consideration tonight. There are just two last issues to touch on briefly. One are for the design review changes to the building, and this shows the front of the building of the Tucker's Larder building. We'll see a new awning in this location, and this is an illustration of it. Around the corner here to the right is the wine, is the ice cream window, and here we see an illustration of the window. These changes are considered minor and incidental, so they're exempt from design review, but they're mentioned here for your reference. The last issue is the amendment to the master sign plan, and it shows, this would be the sign on the front awning, and this ice cream logo would be the sign on the ice cream window awning. And both of these are within the eleven and a half square feet that are allotted to the business under the approved master sign plan, and so they're consistent with the approval. I'm available to answer questions, and the applicant is also here to present the project.
So, I, we have a significant list of items, so I want to run back through all of the items that you want us to opine about. So, this may not be a complete list, but service hours, specifically of Tucker's application, the service hours beginning at seven AM, and there's the ten PM close, is that in line with the existing, with the dark or ten PM?
The business itself is approved for operation till ten, but since it's a store that people purchase things from and either go consume onsite or off-site, it's the outdoor open space areas we're more concerned with. They're limited to dark during the winter and nine PM in the summer, although the applicant would like these spaces to be available until ten year round.
So, existing is nine, and the request is ten.
For outdoors.
Basically, for outdoor, right. And then, we have beer and wine consumed in all the open spaces, including the terrace and the front patio and the back courtyard. That kind of relates to both Tucker's and Somersden use, I would assume, since it'll be Somersden wines that'll be consumed.
Well...
Can somebody be in?
It won't be, Tucker's Larder won't be limited to Somersden wines. It'll sell a variety of different beverages, and it'll be beverages in a quantity that you would consume with a meal, so it's completely separate from the wine tasting quantities at Somersden, where there have been some restrictions on the consumption outdoors, and especially on the terrace because of the limited quantity of a tasting.
But there's not a proposal to extend Somersden's ability to serve anything more than tastes?
No, that's correct. This relates solely to Tucker's Larder.
Then, we have the barbecue is proposed to replace the fountain in the courtyard. We have the catering operation and the twenty-four new special events.
Yes.
And those are all the Tucker's Larder. Then, the catering component, again for Somersden, as it relates to onsite prepared foods to be paired with the Somersden tasting of wine.
It's the wine and food pairing is the issue. It would be considered off-site preparation because the businesses, the businesses are not the same.
The courtyard is owned by Somersden, yes?
Correct, yes.
So, if it's prepared at the barbecue and served in the tasting room, are we talking about the same business or not?
We're considering that, the Tucker's Larder business. It's run and operated as an independent business, and if they provide the catering, it's the Somersden use that really is up for, for the change.
And then, the last of the checklist is the building changes, the awning to the front awning, the ice cream side access awning, and the overall master sign, which would require an amendment. So, are those all the items that we're discussing here this evening? Is that it? Is there a just little question? We'll, I'll ask Councilwoman Moller. Other report now, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for the reports, Henry. There's a lot of information here, so thank you, Mayor, for summarizing that. I did have one question on page seven of ten under special events. First paragraph, you also indicate under while the cooking demonstrations are an occasional core use of the site, they're not considered special events and be permitted up to once a month. So, would that be twelve added to sixty-four?
That'd be sixty-four plus these twelve cooking demonstrations.
So, seventy-six. Is that right?
If they were to be considered special events, they're indicating they'd like it part of their core use, that it's part of the cooking and the food use rather than private party, which is what special events are usually qualified under. This is part of the, the public use, even though it doesn't occur daily.
So, demonstration, public demonstration of cooking.
Public demonstration use. Very similar would be the cooking demonstrations that occur at Napa-style on a weekly basis. It's just part of the, the regular use.
And the applicant will give me a little more feedback on that, I'm assuming. I'm going to hold my thoughts for now because I'm still trying to digest this list, but I think, I think I get the gist of everything, and I'll leave it open for now.
Councilwoman Moller, questions about the staff report?
Yes, I, I do. The first question I have is about the kitchen. I'll give you a little background. I saw that a type forty-one liquor license would be associated with what we're calling a limited-service restaurant. So, I looked up on the ABC website when they issue type forty-one licenses, and they said that's for a bona fide restaurant. So, I called them to figure out how we could, what are two definitions meant if they were the same thing, and they brought up a couple of things that I have questions about. So, the first is they said that for a type forty-one license, you have to be a bona fide restaurant, and the first thing that that means is you need a full kitchen. So, based on the diagrams here, do we have, is a full kitchen proposed?
A full kitchen is proposed. It's the Department of Environmental Health that will work with the applicant to outfit the kitchen accordingly and meet all of their standards in connection with the ABC's requirement for a full kitchen to service this limited-service restaurant use.
Because these are just kind of drawings, so that's...
Right. These are conceptual drawings. They'll do...
Right, so a full kitchen will be part of that. Okay. Then, my other question kind of relates to what you brought up in the second paragraph on page seven of ten about the to-go quality of beer and wine in open containers. So, and to kind of fully understand this raises a question about, so the proposal is for the beer and wine to be on the front patio, the breezeway, the interior courtyard, and the rooftop terrace.
I would say that the breezeway is probably not included because you wouldn't sit down there at a table, no table. there at a table, no tables are proposed there. It would be at any of the area tables.
Okay, so there's no, the breezeway will have no tables. Okay, so then are the front patio, the interior courtyard, and the rooftop terrace considered by our definite, to be usable, commercial, usable, open space by our town definition?
Most of it is, yes.
Okay, so then that brings me to the other question, because they said in addition to a full kitchen, we needed seating. So when I looked up the use, the commercial usable open space definition, it says the area, the use of the area is not integral or essential to the operation of the business.
And in this case, it wouldn't be considered essential because the, the beer and wine that is sold is packaged for offsite, and it's up to a customer to make the choice of where to consume it, similar to purchasing wine from the market, although that's a different...
So how do you reconcile if they...
It's an on and offsite license, and it's that on and offsite nature where you can elect where to consume it that leaves the open space, open space. Even though you'd be drinking or eating food purchased, or maybe having a wine sampling from Somerson, the businesses can use the areas. It can't be their exclusive use, the public has to feel free to come in and have a right to use that area.
So how do they fulfill a requirement for seating to be a bona fide restaurant to get a type 41 license?
I'm not understanding the question, I'm sorry.
Okay, so to get a type 41 license, you have to be a bona fide restaurant according to ABC. So you need a full kitchen, which we discussed, and you also need seating. But this, they don't have seating inside of the four walls, correct?
Correct.
They would be using commercial, usable, open space, which can't be dedicated to any one use.
Well, the full service restaurant, again, I go back to the concept that it can be taken to go or consumed onsite, so we don't consider those seats in the courtyard, the terrace, or the front patio, the exclusive use of this limited service restaurant, but available for their use where they, a consumer elects to consume it onsite along with the beer or the wine.
And so then, how is that supervised?
It's supervised by the business and in connection with their ABC license that limits, that requires them to exert control over the site and to know what is occurring with the consumption of beer and wine.
So they'll, they'll have barriers around the area that their seating is?
Good example would be the Somerson courtyard, where they place a planner at the four corners to mark its boundaries. The same issue doesn't apply to the courtyard because it's built out and has the wall around it, and I don't believe on the terrace either, although I understand the terrace, they need to have better visual control, so something like closed circuit television could be how the business manages that. Although those are requirements of the ABC, and they'll be required to pass all those hurdles with them.
So we have to kind of work with ABC to make sure we get it correct. Those are my questions for now.
Councilor Doran Becker, questions about the staff report?
Excuse me, I do have one, and that is on page seven of 10, under special events, where you're talking about the cooking demonstrations under the, under the special event title. Can you tell me what your concept there is, or what you believe the concept to be versus the chef's special nights?
I'm mentioning the cooking demonstrations under special events because they occur at a maximum of one time a month rather than on a daily basis, and so that aspect of the use could lend one to believe that they are special events, but the special events that are defined under this permit are private, organized events that go beyond the core use. Even though this isn't, the cooking demonstrations are occasional, it's part of the core use that the applicant would like to, to conduct.
Thank you.
No other questions? I do have a couple questions. I noticed in the application, an expectation of 15 to 20 employees associated with this business, where are they parked?
They, we'll have to figure that out basically, because the parking lot is based on the ratio of limited service restaurant and the retail commercial standard, and it's the best approximation that the, the town can provide for the lot. It becomes a management issue with the, the operator and the employees on where to park and where during the shifts. Those 15 to 20 employees wouldn't be present at any one time, we're looking at a maximum of really five per shift, and it really doesn't make sense to have them park in the lot because that takes too great a number of those spaces out of commission for, for customers.
But we require other businesses to have onsite parking for employees, is that accurate?
Well, it's based on, on, the parking ratio is intended to approximate what the number of employees would be. It doesn't, the parking ratio doesn't just apply a standard for the customers, it's the whole entire use. And some businesses have a heavier employee model than others, this is one of the higher employee counts, it looks like.
And that's, but that's my point, I'm trying to figure out how we apply the requirement for parking to include the percentage of employees that will be parking there at any given time versus the shared use of the other business. They have employees as well, there's an apartment there, it's a dedicated space, so I'm trying to figure out if we've calculated that there are sufficient parking spaces for two, you've said, separate businesses on this site.
Based, okay, based on the parking ratios that are in the zoning ordinance, the two uses combined meet the minimum number of spaces in the lot. When we have businesses that have a higher employee count than others, parking management agreements and systems have been ways to manage that. We've done that down at Hotel Yountville, and there are other businesses we've been in discussion with that with, so that's something that we could condition this business upon to do extra efforts above and beyond meeting the minimum parking standard.
But I do want to clarify, Mayor, you bring up a question. Our standard is not designate employee parking. All of our facilities, for example, Bouchon Bakery, the Bistro, they don't have, when we put our parking standards together, it was a aggregate and not a, here's your employee, here's your public parking. And in most cases, that's why we have changed recently, the, the restaurant requirement was structured and changed, but the current parking ratio as Sanders Smith identified is, is based on the square footage and the use. And in many of our cases, we do have some situations where the parking onsite is not, when you look at it, is not sufficient for that activity if you designate it only. Almost all of our restaurants fall in that case, with the exception that the V Marketplace property has sufficient parking based on our account, but a number of our restaurants, including ad hoc, don't. Chichio's doesn't, and that's where the street, you know, there's an assumption made that some of the employees and a combination of visitors are using the public parking along streets.
Okay. Also related to parking, staff's recommendation is to not allow a delivery vehicle to be parked basically full-time onsite. What's to prevent it from being parked right in front of the business in the public parking space? Nothing?
A condition?
Nothing, and we haven't addressed that, so we can include that as a condition.
Okay. And the last question I have for now is restrooms. You get, again, you, you said these are two separate businesses, so does this business have what it needs regarding restrooms?
They do, they don't have their separate facilities, they have a shared facility with Somerson, so if they're open between seven and 10, Somerson has to be open between those hours as well.
But this application doesn't have Somerson asking for its hours to be changed to seven Is that, or are you saying both businesses are now asking to open at seven?
No, they don't need to open at seven, but they have to have an agreement to be able to use the space. So I need to look back at the condition to refresh my memory. The easiest way is when two businesses are open at the same time, and Cornerstone and Page are an example of that. But, but no, I have suggested a change in hours for both businesses from, from seven to 10 so that they can have a better sharing of the space. Somerson, of course, won't be interested in opening at seven AM for wine tasting.
Let's not assume any business won't come up with a reason to be open at any hour of the day or night that they're allowed to.
And I will just footnote, shared restroom facilities are something the town encourages in a number of our space to not over, and you'll find them in a number of locations. For example, Plaza Corsia has a, a shared restroom facility for all of its tenants, they don't have individual restrooms, and in fact, one of our more unique situations, if you look at North Block Hotel in Redwood, the Redwood Restaurant Facility for itself does not actually have restrooms, you have to use the lobby of the North Block Hotel. Similarly situated, there is one set of public restrooms in the Washington Square area for all of the open, or all the tenants in that complex. So it's not that requirement as long as the hours are coordinated so that access. What's important to note is that Tucker's Larder cannot be open unless they secure that period, whether they, they have to have restroom facilities, so the town will make sure that we understand that restroom agreement.
Which may or may not include changing the hours of the Somerson business, it's just access has to be available.
Correct.
Okay. I think those are my questions for now. I did, before we move on to the applicant, apparently the world is not watching right now. Comcast is having a problem with our transmission, is that still...
What we have learned, and I need to find more information, right now what we're being told is that residents do not have a cable box, are not able to view the meeting on channel 28, Napa Valley TV. If they do have a cable box, they can view, so apparently it has something to do with the set box, and it's a Comcast system issue, and I will work with our representatives from Napa Valley TV and Comcast to try to have a better understanding of what the technical issue is. We are video streaming live on www.townofyountville.com, so apparently some residents are able, and I'm not tech savvy, so it may be you have to do it the old-fashioned way on, on your set top box versus a pre-programmed, so we will try to find out more information on, on what the Comcast and channel 28 issue, but it is not a delivery of signal issue.
Okay, thank you for that aside. As part of our public hearing, I invite the applicant, any members of the applicant's team to come forward and make a presentation, then we'll open up for the rest of the public to comment. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much for having me, Mayor, distinguished council members, thank you for having me and listening to my proposal tonight. I would like to take a moment to thank Stephen Rogers and Bob Tierney and Sandra Smith for being an incredible help to, and source of information and guidance to bring me here today with some semblance of order. I'm typically a very organized person, but I find that I've not been before a, a city council or a town council before, so don't know quite what the expectations are, but I have performed in my past as well, so maybe that'll help. But at any rate, I wanted to just tell you briefly, my name is Gene Tartaglia, I'm originally from Miami, Florida. I went to college at Georgetown University and moved to New York City, whereupon I, I got into the retail business, clothing business. And I was in the retail business until 1994 when I kind of retired, and found a hobby of, of, in opening a restaurant. And I opened a very large restaurant in San Francisco in 1997 called Mecca, and we sold it in 2004, and at that time, I moved permanently to the Napa Valley. I had a home, I have owned a home in the Napa Valley since 97, and I very happily moved here full-time in 2004, and I think it's a magical place and I'm happy to be here. At that time, of course, I, I opened a little restaurant, well, a few years later, in Bel Air Plaza called Barber's Q. We actually transitioned our name to the Q Restaurant and Bar recently with the advent of a liquor license, which we actually got lucky and won the lottery. So I, I am very happy to think about doing projects, working on concepts that are not necessarily expected, something that inspires me, that motivates me, that's not just another store or larder or restaurant, if you will, in the case of Bel Air Plaza. And I try and think outside the box a little bit because I find it otherwise not very stimulating. And so when I was taken to Somerson to see the ranch as part of my current restaurant duties, and, and I'm a very big fan of wineries, and I, I have been since the mid 80s, since I moved to the Bay Area, I was very impressed with the ranch, and it motivated me to start thinking about opportunities. And at the time, we spoke about opportunities, but I think the Somerson folks were not ready for, you know, the kind of operation structure that I wanted, which was to operate the space. You know, they wanted to operate the space themselves, so I stepped back and got a call from them about six months ago or so, and they said that they really knew that they were not a restaurant operators or food operators, or understood the nature of food preparation or being a grocer, if you will. By the way, my family are, they're, they were grocers, we had a grocery store in Miami when I was growing up, and I worked there often. My father sold produce from a truck when I was growing up, and my grandfather sold produce from a horse-drawn buggy in upstate New York, so I go way back as it pertains to the sale, the growing and sale of provisions, if you will, and direct contacts, contact with customers and neighbors and community. And I feel very strongly that it might be my, my drawing, my card to do something this special as Tucker's Larder. Tucker, by the way, is my golden retriever who passed in 2010, and he was the first dog I ever had, and a great love of my life, so hence the name. The gift of Tucker was given to me by Ken Folk, who is in charge of designing this project. He's a very capable and very, somewhat famous young man these days, doing a lot of great projects and things, and it's my pleasure to step outside the box with him. We have Douglas Slaton here tonight representing Ken Folk, and I can thank him for coming. Also, I want to introduce very briefly Kelly Sherman, who's my business partner at the Q Restaurant and Bar, and a couple of other friends have joined me tonight to lend support, and I appreciate that. So without further ado, I just wanted, am I running out of time? Let me know if I'm overstating.
No, don't, don't worry about that.
Okay. So the idea here, what drove me to this was the fact that here was a ranch that was just begging for some guidance, some direction, and some, some means of bringing product into a prepared state for people to enjoy in its community, down the hill, if you will. I try and use a lot of products in my, my restaurant, local products, it's, it's a, you know, it's a goal of mine. Everybody talks about farm to table, I think the term is a little bit jaded, but when I thought about the ranch, I thought there was a lot more of an opportunity because we're dealing with a very big ranch, first of all. Wine, of course, is, is produced there, but they also have a couple of thousand head of sheep. They are in discussions with me and, and willing to start raising chickens and some heritage pigs, which really excites me. They also have set aside a couple of acres for growing vegetables, which I think, I grow vegetables at my own home, I have a very small piece of land, maybe about an acre and a half, and I, I've portioned off part of that, we grow vegetables for the restaurant, so that, something that really makes a difference for me to be able to grow the food and then prepare it and serve it, and I think all of our staff and our people that work together really get a charge from that, and it really does mean something. They treat it with greater respect, they, they try and, and serve a better quality fare to people, and they know the source, so they have, they do it with confidence. In this case, with Somerson... In this case, with Somersden, the menu that you've been presenting in your packets is really a, a list of options. It would never be that large, particularly given the size of the space, the size of the kitchen. So we would be not presenting a menu of options that great. It wouldn't be really feasible or appropriate. But it all deals with spring and the process would be that when we decide on a final menu, when the chef really starts to prepare these dishes and we, we, we love the things we love, then we, we proceed with a planting guide for the ranch. So we would give them the varieties, the vegetables, you know, all of the specific information about what we want grown and use those things specifically for the spring menu. So that's something quite unique. I, I think it's really to rely on them for the majority of the product will be something very unique and different. Obviously, chicken and pigs, pork, if you will, are things that we'll have to get elsewhere for the time being. And if we're able to, you know, start to work with those, raising those animals on the ranch, I think it would be a big plus. So the idea here is really to, to bring to the town this, this ranch food. And, and not only does that piece of it excite me, but the idea that perhaps the cooking of my upbringing, the heritage that I bring to the table is, is, has a Middle Eastern influence. I think Middle Eastern influences are at the forefront of really becoming very popular in the world of food preparation. And there are a lot of great publications out now that are absolutely spectacular books on food and they're very exciting. And of course, I'm very excited because I grew up on a lot of this food and the flavors. And it's all from the heart, obviously. Italians aren't much different, really, it's just the food, you know, is, is quite different. But it's really about the spices and the freshness and the daily preparation of food, which this space lends itself to, the concept of a larder lends itself to versus a full-service restaurant. I, I have a full-service restaurant in Bel Air Plaza and I'm not looking for a full-service restaurant in Yountville. I think this is a unique part of its uniqueness in that we have a pre-prepared food, some prepared to order foods, be it, you know, a shawarma or, you know, which is essentially a roasted piece of dough that's topped with hummus and then it has chopped meats on it and is topped with a salad. And, you know, people are able to either take that with them or, you know, it's the customer's choice. What do I do with this shawarma? I'm going to either, you know, take it with me to go, I'm going to preorder it, or I'm going to order it at the counter, or I'm going to take it to a, a public seat position, which is afforded me by the, the town of Yountville and, and enjoy it in the courtyard or enjoy it on the terrace. And I think that's completely up to the customer. We obviously are responsible operators. We've been operating for six years in Bel Air Plaza. We know that public areas, dealing with the plaza, have to be kept orderly and clean and, and, and under our oversight because our business does affect those areas and we're, we're very committed to that. We've spent a lot of money on the patio areas in Bel Air Plaza, invested money in the, the overall beautification of our, our space and our perimeter of our space. And it's a reflection on us as far as we're concerned. So the public spaces are equally important to us as the interior. So here we have this concept, here we have this idea, which I think for Yountville is very unique. We also understand the nature of the community is that we are wine, wine centric, if you will. I know a lot of people in Yountville and in Napa Valley would expect to enjoy with their kibbe a, you know, a beautiful glass of Napa Valley wine. I am one of the few restaurants, be reminded, in the Napa Valley that serves exclusively California wine, the majority of which is from the Napa Valley. I also know that some great producers here in Yountville, in conjunction with serving a glass of wine with food, I think, you know, or, or offering it, if you will, in this case, is imperative and very important to the community. I don't, I can't imagine wanting to sit down and, and not having that option, particularly given the, the description of the, of the permit and the business. Type 41 license is what I had in Bel Air Plaza. And I think, to your point, it was a good question, by the way, the spa, the public spaces need to be, have a perimeter designation. And in the case of Bel Air Plaza, for example, they required me to put some staggered planters, which I did. And, and we've enclosed it even further now with some, some hedges, which are much taller, which I originally wanted to do when we opened. But that being said, so the ABC will require designation in the case, most of these areas are already self-designated, if you will. You know, in terms of consumption of, of wine or beer or an open container, you know, the customer's choice again is, is what we would rely on. And their ability to use that public space with that choice, I think, is, is their decision, not ours. But at any rate, I think the issue with the ABC is probably a non-issue, but of course, I have to pass that test with them and I have to make sure that I can perform to whatever regulation, rules and regulations they have. But that's, as I understand it, that's the, the situation and the condition of that. So, that being said, I wanted to say a little something about some of the questions that came up in terms of the cooking demonstration. The cooking demonstrations were just a thought. You know, the thought was, maybe the public would really like this. You know, maybe they would like to see how to cook a leg of lamb or something. So to me, it wasn't a special event at all. It was just something that, that we could post, maybe in the local paper, announce it, you know, that we have a, Tucker's Larder is inviting you to come to a cooking demonstration. It's free of charge. Maybe that we could be in the hotel, concierge could say, recommend, well, you know, we have a local restaurant that offers this. So it wasn't something that I thought of as a special event. Doesn't have to happen, I just thought it would be a nice thing to do. And, you know, if something, if the community can appreciate or get, you know, some kind of a demonstration and have that option to spend an hour or two of their day, I thought that would be a nice thing to do. As far as the other special events go, you know, I, I think that sometimes we like to showcase who we are and what we do. And I think it's, for me, it's a perfect marriage with the other businesses in the community, meaning that I do all sorts of events with wineries. And, you know, I, I feel like the association, the relationship that we have is paramount to my success and my ability to function and be profitable as a business. If, if I didn't have the wineries, you know, I don't think we would really be near as successful. I think they're very supportive, which is why I pour, you know, only the local wines. And these events allow me to bring together our, what we're doing in the way of food and, and their wine. And so typically, my event will be the association of a winery presenting their wines. I will not serve Somersden exclusively, they know that. I, I think that would be inappropriate and not very interesting really to have a tasting room next door, you know, where they, they're perfectly welcome to taste Somersden wines and buy Somersden wines in the building next door at the larder. I really feel like we need to represent the community at large and, and support the wineries at large, not just a Somersden representation. So I didn't want anybody to think it was just going to be Somersden wine. So these events for me are really about pulling together with my partners in the community. And my thought about the, the chef events was that we could bring other people into the community, not unlike on a very, less grander scale, the Meadowwood 12 Days of Christmas, but, you know, I'm not putting myself in that league, but I'm just saying that I think for a casual evening or for a casual event in conjunction with a winery to bring somebody, you know, a, a rising person, either from the Bay Area or from outside the Bay Area, to create some interest around this cuisine, which is relatively underrepresented in the United States right now. And, but I think is, again, on the forefront of, of coming forward with something very interesting, new and different, as customers are always wanting. I think that this would give us an opportunity to bring in some people who are fairly renowned in this cuisine, which is, you know, a Middle Eastern slash kind of Mediterranean flavor. And so that's why I was, I was thinking about the chefs' events. And I also feel like it might be a good thing to partner with the hotels. We were talking about parking and transportation concerns. Sandra and I talked at length about this. I understand the concerns and the needs to address this. So I thought maybe if we thought about the hotels, working with the hotels on some of these events, with their clients, so that people would be residents in the hotels, that we would maximize, you know, their participation, may cut down a little bit on the parking. Also, for larger public events, to require that we bring people in in public transportation, you know, would be a good idea. Because you certainly don't want 50 people floating into town in separate cars and all of a sudden expecting to find parking spaces around. I understand that dynamic very well and so I'm sensitive to that. So just thoughts and ideas behind how we might handle some of these situations where you want to review them and I understand that. And so those are my thoughts on, on special events. As far as the hours go, access is all we're asking of Somersden. They know that. They are not interested in opening those doors for business at 7:00 AM. We have requested access for the restroom usage. And, you know, we feel like there, there's a need for an option for breakfast, for a cup of coffee. We have a couple of brands, well, a brand that we proposed to bring in from San Francisco called Site Glass Coffee. I don't know if any of you are familiar with it. It's a very new store. It's a beautiful store. Their, their coffee is excellent. They roast on site and a beautiful space and location they built out. And we think there's a need for an option for a great cup of coffee in the morning in, in Yountville and maybe one, you know, if you split a long line in two, you'll have two shorter lines. And I think that that's probably my thought about that from a business opportunity perspective. You know, we're not looking to put in a bakery there. We do have some good local sources and somebody that I'd like to partner with perhaps in Napa to, to provide us with those goods. Again, limited kitchen space, that sort of thing. We also propose to serve ice cream. And, you know, we, we don't want to serve any ice cream. We want to serve Humphrey Slocum ice cream. And I don't know if any of you are familiar with Humphrey Slocum, but they have a store in San Francisco. And they serve some very unique ice creams. I, you know, they're not tricky, but they're, there are flavors that are unusual and I, I think they're unique and I think people will really love the variety of what they do. So my thought is to, to give people something new, not tricky, but classic, done in a different way. And I think ice cream is, would be a great addition, especially this kind of thing where, where, you know, community members, hotel guests can walk up to, you know, the window if they prefer not to come into the space in the summer months and, and get themselves a cone or their kids a cone. And it's just very exciting for me to think about that opportunity and particularly with such great quality of product. So I think the mix is good. I think the idea is good. I think it's different. I think it's unique and I think we really will offer something special to the town of Yountville. My concerns are your concerns and I don't, I'm a business person, but I'm also a community member. So I, I really want to be able to bring you something special, bring the town something special and its citizens and, and, and work with you to make it work properly. So I don't know if anybody has any questions directly for me, but...
Any questions from council to our applicant? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me.
And we'll have more discussion. Sandra, do we have a representative from Somersden to address the issues that you say are kind of separate?
They were unable to attend tonight.
Okay. So I'll invite any other members of the public that would like to speak to this issue. Please, welcome.
Thank you. Let me make room. Thank you. I noticed that several members of council were engaged in full disclosure, so I feel compelled to do the same. Part of my reason for being here is I'm selfish. Those of you who know my wife, I hope agree that you feel she's a wonderful woman. She has not mastered the art of cooking. And when I try to cook, no one eats my presentations. So we eat out often, most of the time. And by eating out, I mean either going out to dinner in Yountville or bringing it in. And this opportunity presents a wonderful option for us, especially with the kind of company we get when we're invaded by grandchildren and in-laws and so forth and so on. So that's the selfish end of it. The community end of it relates to the fact that we truly do consider Yountville to be the culinary epicenter of the Napa Valley. But it's not only the culinary epicenter, it's also the hospitality epicenter of the Napa Valley. And if you know these operators, you understand that they get it when it comes to hospitality. They know how to serve the public, they know how to serve every aspect of the public, even the people in San Francisco who come up here. And I don't mean to put them down, but we all know they're different. Okay? Even they enjoy Barber's Q or the Q Restaurant and Bar. They enjoy the food, they enjoy the service, they enjoy the atmosphere. So I feel that Gene and his crew are a total package. This really fits the community. Certainly, it fits our personal desires and needs. And I really think they'd be a very positive addition. And I thank you for listening to me. I'm late for my reservation at a Yountville restaurant right now and I'm heading out. But thank you, yes?
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, I'm, I'm Gail Policy's husband, Carmen Policy, C-A-R-M-E-N-P-O-L-I-C-Y. Sorry about that. I should have known better.
She beat me to asking. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go Niners, bye.
Any other members of the public like to speak on this issue this evening? Now would be the time. Seeing no others, I will go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this item and return the discussion back to council. I did want to ask one before we discuss this. Sandra, I want to clarify this, two businesses, two applications moving forward. I find it a little bit challenging not having a representative of the Somersden changes to address the council's needs. So if we have concerns about those components that don't affect the Tucker's Larder components, how do you propose that we address that?
They can be deleted from the approval. If you are wanting to know more from the applicant, we can continue that aspect to consider it at a different time. Or if you're comfortable with it, it can just be included as part of this approval.
Okay. So if the council would keep that in mind, that we do need to address the Somersden, there are two, if I have it correct, specific new requests. One, catered food and wine pairings and then the building changes. Now, the building changes, because the building is owned as part of the Somersden business, those changes would have to be, I guess we, we could address it either way, whether we see it as a Somersden issue or a Tucker's Larder issue.
Which building are you speaking of? The Tucker's Larder building?
The awnings, ice cream window, master sign amendment.
That can be approved based on Gene's representation as the applicant. Somersden has signed off on the application as the owner, so they're in agreement with whatever changes.
Then when it comes to things like shared parking or access to the Somersden property in those early morning hours when their business is not open, we could potentially, in theory, approve that pending a formal agreement that you would require that there be something in writing that guarantees their access or whatever that might look like.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay. So with that discussion, council member Mueller, would you like to initiate the discussion, maybe addressing at, at least some, if not all, of the seven items that we are asked to rule on?
Okay, I will give it a shot here. You know, the, the hours, there's a lot of arrows, I think, kind of going in different directions. So I, I agree with you, Mayor, it's going to be a little tough with Somersden not here. If their, if a business is going to be open at 7:00 AM, I totally agree, we need a restroom. And without, you know, knowing that they can have access to that at Somersden, I'm not sure how I can say okay to the hours. I, in, in terms of the, the beer and wine, I did look at the, I still have, I think it's great that we can actually start using some of the shared open space more often. I think it's going to encourage more people. I think it's going to encourage more people to come into that area. I, without really understanding what ABC has to say about what the restrictions are in terms of, you know, making barriers around certain tables, how much tables, area and open space are we going to lose? Is it going to be restricted? So, I think that's probably my big ticket item in the resolution is item eight, which would be approving all this alcohol beverage without really knowing what changes or requirements ABC would have. So, I think I would want to delete item number eight. I am totally open to, once they come back and they know what ABC is going to say, to amend it, probably much like they just did once they got their liquor license for their restaurant down in Napa. So, I just don't want to start restricting open space without knowing what I might be restricting. So, by approving that, we could be restricting a lot. I just don't know. The barbecue, I think I agree with staff that, that staff say the opinion that the barbecue represents a minor and incidental use intrusion into the courtyard, and I think that is in their resolution as well. So, I'm fine with what they put in there. Catering to Somersden, I think with the food and wine pairing, we've really restricted, and please correct me if I'm wrong, all of our other wine tasting rooms to, you know, prepackaged food. So, this would be outside of the scope of that if we allow, unless they have a special event, a change in that. So, I'm not really ready to move forward with that right now without really talking to Somersden about that either. I like the staff's proposal about the special events. Good luck to everybody trying to coordinate all that. It's going to be pretty difficult, I think, but it probably can be done. I'm okay with the building changes, and I do have concern about the employee parking. I know we really haven't conditioned a lot of other businesses, but we're different now. We have parking problems. And I would really like to see an employee parking plan and how that would really work out. And I do agree with staff on the last item about the van. I think that, and I like the bicycle idea. It's a little Yountville, and we'll just kind of see what we can do about that, so. I think I'm done. Not sure, I reserve the right to come back and come back to something else.
Of course, well, this is, this is to initiate, initiate the discussion.
May I offer some clarification? Is this a good time for that?
Sure.
One of your concerns, councilmember Mueller, was delaying the decision till we understand Somersden's agreement to use the restrooms. And by signing the applications, they've agreed to allow their restroom to be used during the hours that Tucker's Larder would be open. So, even if they're not open, they'll provide the facilities for the restaurant, limited service restaurant, to use. Another were your concerns about the ABC and their restrictions. Condition number eight is directly out of earlier approvals. It's a condition that applies to Somersden's use of the outdoor areas and whatever licensing agreements they need to come up, agree to with the ABC. We've included it here because there are very similar, if not identical, requirements for the demonstrating control over the area. With wine and food pairings, there is one example in town that is permitted catered food on a daily basis for wine and food pairings, and that is Gerard. And those catered food items can either be hors d'oeuvres or cocktail-sized foods. So, that is in a different zoning district. It's the Old Town Commercial, and it is a more permissive zoning district. It's not the same as this one, but it has been permitted once in the past. Otherwise, you're correct, it is limited to prepackaged food or not allowed at all.
No, that designation, though, is not a limited service restaurant designation for Gerard.
No, but we're talking about Somersden doing wine and food pairings. So, they're both wine tasting rooms, and they're both asking to conduct catered wine and food pairings. Different zoning districts. Zoning districts is the only difference.
Okay. Any other comments at this point, councilmember Mueller?
No, it's, you know, I, the hours, I could be, if they have agreed in writing that they will have their building open at the same times that we're approving, we don't know what we're going to approve yet, so it's kind of hard to know what language they have, but...
We can also add that as a condition that their approval in writing is required.
Right. But I still reserve the right to know what ABC, how they're going to restrict the seating that we have as a condition of the restaurant. So, I'm more than happy to quickly amend that once we know, once the application is put in. And if they approve a type 20 instead of a type 41 or whatever, then licensed, then we can quickly amend that, too. So, I think that that can be done pretty quickly. So, I really like to see what that seating plan is going to be. And so, I think my only change would be that if, if you have in writing what these hours are, or you want to add that as a condition of approval, I can probably take that one off the list, but it still leaves several.
So, and I believe staff's saying that item eight, the one you were proposing to remove, is actually the point that covers your concern, that it says they can't use the open space if it violates the ABC license that they have.
Well, as, part of my discussion with the ABC, trying to understand what a bona fide restaurant was and how they work with open space, they, you know, admonished me, I guess is the way, that, you know, this is not, don't just approve something and dump it on them. Please work with them so that they can put all, so that we share responsibility. If, you know, I said, well, what if the town goes ahead and approves this with the assumption that, you know, if you disallow it? They said that just makes their job harder. They just requested that we just work together, try to come up with a good outcome. So, I thought that was a very reasonable request. So, that's why I'm saying I'm very open to an amendment at a later date, once we really know what we're talking about in terms of restricting tables in designated public, commercial, usable, open space.
Okay. We've got your concern noted there. Councilmember Hall?
Yes, and I want to thank the applicant, Gene, for coming up tonight. It was spirited, it was very well presented, so I have a much better understanding now, and thank you for that. I'll go through the list of the items that we have before us. I'm fine with the hours at seven, seems reasonable. Let's add, let's make, let's take the line in half. I think that was your comment. I think that's a reasonable request. I share the concern with the bathroom, but as long as we can get the two to agree, it sounds like they do, let's, let's move on. Beer and wine consumed in open spaces, as they're defined here. My only question here, and I think we can obviously delineate that, and that is specifically as it's designed or drawn here, I don't see the next door, building A, as presented. I would just trust that they would have some enforceability or control to not purchase a bottle of Somersden wine, then walk over and sit at the table and pull a cork at the Somersden property. I don't know how we enforce or control it, but I don't think that's allowed in a wine tasting room, which Somersden is for building A. So, my only concern is, you know, someone pulls a cork on the other side of property, how do we know they didn't buy it at Somersden and then walk across the way and pull it there? If there's any reason or rationale as to why we would need to watch or manage or control Barbecue, fine. I guess the fountain's going away. It doesn't look like it was holding water very well. The catering operation, I'm comfortable with that. I did have a question about the truck, or I would only question about where the truck would be stored. I'll, one moment. My only comment is if we can find an off-site location for it, you bring it in, you load it up, you take it to where you're going, I think that's a reasonable request by the town. We don't want to encumber the view, the sight from the vacant lot next to the ranch market of a truck in the back or even on the city streets. But my request would be that we put some condition on that, and I think you've done that, so I'm okay with that. The 24 new special events, I'm comfortable with. I understand the interest in having cooking demonstrations. I don't have concern with that. I did have a question more specifically, or a little bit of a concern, or a concern with regards to the onsite prepared foods being used for Somersden, but I think you've explained that the catered foods are brought into Gerard, and perhaps that's something that's already a precedent where we allow that for a certain tasting room. This is a different district, if you will, and perhaps we need to really reevaluate whether or not that's something that we should open up or not. I'm sort of on the fence on that. I mean, I see it being beneficial to Tucker's Larder and the business there. I don't necessarily concur that they should be able to cook fresh rabbit, heritage pig, and walk next door and say, hey, you know, this goes with the wine that, by the way, we're just going to start pouring now because they happen to be done with it. There should be some control over that. I don't necessarily think that they should get that, that we should change the use for Somersden for that very, you know, that particular issue. As far as the awnings go, as long as they're blue and they look like they did in the picture, I can't see a huge issue with that on the front or the side or otherwise. And again, the only, the only real concern I had listed here was the, you know, the parking of the off-site for the van, the catering van. Outside of that, I, you know, I feel reasonably comfortable. The town staff can work with the applicant and Somersden to make sure they have a reasonable, well-conditioned package together.
Thank you. Sure. Councilmember Doran Becker?
Okay, I will address these issues as well, starting with the hours. I don't see any problem at all with Somersden allowing Tucker's Larder to use the restroom starting at 7:00 a.m. And I trust that the tasting room wouldn't want to be open at 7:00 a.m. So, but I can agree to asking Somersden to put that in writing if it isn't already in writing, that's fine. I have no problem with the barbecue at all. My understanding about open space and an ABC license is not so much that the tables are restricted to other people, but that taking liquor out of the restricted area is against the law. Not that people sitting at the tables within that area, and that doesn't preclude the public from sitting down at those tables because we're not going to, you know, restrict them from doing that. So, I think it serves both place, space, places there. But the misunderstanding is in, the ABC license actually is more about confining liquor consumption in a specific area, not restricting tables to people from outside. I have no problem with the pairings and the wine tastings in Somersden. I think that it's always a good idea. It also lends itself to, as one of the conditions that the, that we always look at in terms of education in the wine tasting, wine tasting process. And I think that pairing of food with wine is part of that educational process, so I have no problem with that. I have no problem with the building changes, certainly. I think that's going to look lovely, and I'm looking forward to seeing that and seeing a successful business going on in that building. For too long, I feel it's been, you know, sort of sitting there empty, and so I'm really looking forward to it being open. The special events are okay. I believe that can be managed, and as you pointed out, Sandra, most businesses don't use, and I don't expect that that, you know, I don't expect that all of the, you know, special events will be used, you know, from day one. That's something that we're going to revisit anyway and look at how it works out. But I think that the Thursday evening concerts at Somersden have only, you know, enhanced the quality of life in this town on a Thursday evening, so I think that the special events will be fine. And the parking plan for employees, I think that's, that would be really terrific, and I don't know how that could be accomplished. I wouldn't, I wouldn't personally ask that that be, you know, make or break part of the approval, but I would, you know, you know, ask for it if it can be overseen. Possibly, there are agreements that Tucker's Larder could make with other businesses that have lots of extra parking space. I don't know, but to me, that's not a make or break it. And about the van, I do agree that the van can't sit and take up parking space in such a, our town where parking is so, so I think there needs to be a plan to deal with a van. But otherwise, everything else, I'm delighted, and I am especially looking forward to the tabouleh.
Thank you, councilmember Doran Becker. My comments sound fairly similar to what you've already heard. I must admit, when I came in here tonight, I had some serious reservations about some of the points, and I, you might be able to tell by the questions I was asking staff. I still have a concern, I'll kind of work backwards from my list, the cater, catering delivery van, whatever we're talking about, that concerns me because I see the potential, the city of Napa had to deal with this, and a more of a catering, mobile vendor component, that that vehicle becomes signage. The whole thing's wrapped in Tucker's Larder, and it's parked on the street. And then, how do we regulate that? And how is that fair to every other business that can't do that? So, I have a concern about how we regulate that. I trust staff can find a workable solution. It sounds like an inconsequential item, but we've learned over time that sometimes little things turn into big things.
I'm sorry to interrupt that procedure, but I just thought of it as a big deal.
Actually, you've done all that you need to do at this point, and this is really kind of our time, so, but, but thank you. I do want to say that I'm comfortable with the vast majority of our items here. No question that will require proof of cooperation with the hours. I think it's reasonable. There have not been significant noise or lighting impacts on the neighborhood as Somersden has done their outdoor special events, so that gives me a little more trust that we can, we can try this. It is, I wouldn't say pushing the envelope too much, but it is kind of a new way of doing things, which I find frankly kind of fresh and energizing, but we have to just be careful that we don't have negative unintended consequences. The condition that's critical for me is number four, which is that we're having a comprehensive review of all the aspects of this business in six months so that we can find out what we don't know yet in terms of any impacts. The courtyard use with the barbecue, I have no problem with because it doesn't impact immediately adjacent private homes or businesses that might have impacts with the smoke and the odor. We didn't even discuss the string lights that are proposed for the terrace, but I see that those are also included in the review, so if we feel like there is an excessive light spillover issue, knowing those, the style of that lighting is really soft accent lighting, I don't really anticipate that being anything but kind of a cosmetic accent. The catering is where I started to have the most trouble. I've always been sensitive to the impacts on our existing restaurant community, and that we are as fair as we can be with all of the other wine tasting businesses we have. You've got a little bit of both going on here, which is a unique situation. So, I'm going to defer to staff on this point. The number seems high to me in terms of the added special events. We're talking about 64 events between the two businesses, but I won't assume that's going to be a problem. If it becomes a problem, we'll be the first ones to know about it, and you'll be the second ones to know about it, or the other way around. And we'll deal with it if it does get out of hand. I was concerned about Somersden's numbers, and then when staff has said that they've actually, now that may change, they may start maxing out their, their special events, but we'll continue to monitor that and deal with it if we need to. I am not willing to grant Somersden's request for food and wine pairings with them absent. I don't think that's at all appropriate. It should not be your responsibility to represent them. That's, that's part of their conditional use permit, or their use permit. And I think the building changes are minor. The awnings and the signage, I have no problem with that. I'm excited to actually see something going into this space. We all are, I think. I agree with some of the public comments. I agree with some of the public comment that, um, there is a comfort level, knowing the history that you bring and the, the reputation and the quality that you will be bringing. Um, and I think that we all, we also have some examples. Uh, the open space was, uh, discussed as a, as a sticking point. I think we've seen in several cases, Bouchon Bakery, the Youngfield Deli, Napa Style, Kelly's Fuel and Provisions are examples that popped into my head right away where we have been allowing that type of use in the open space, even Gerard with their open space, uh, tables outside. Uh, if a business starts to overstep and, and exclude the public from those spaces, then we'll have that conversation. So, um, I'm confident my concerns can be addressed by staff with the, uh, the catering vehicle and the monitoring of the, um, number of special events and the impacts on the, on the neighborhood. So, I can, uh, give my support to the project. Um, are there any other, um, points? I know, Councilmember Mueller, you went first and may have heard something that, uh, has struck you. You were interested in amending the conditions to, uh, remove condition eight.
Yeah, I would just-
I did not, I didn't hear that from the rest of the council, but-
Right. I would just like to, you know, really hear what they have to say and really know what I'm approving or not approving, once we hear, uh, from ABC.
And it comes down to a majority decision by the council. If there's a majority that has that shared concern, then we may have to, uh, deal with that item. If the majority of the council is comfortable with it, then we will proceed. So-
Right.
The item in question is, is the, um, pertains to condition number eight.
The ABC license and outdoor consumption?
Yeah, and what the regulations are about ABC, um, not deferring our concerns, uh, to ABC, but making decisions based on our, our comfort level. So, um, with that, I'll, um, invite, uh, if there is action to be taken, if somebody wants to present a motion on this item, hopefully there's some action to be taken.
I'm happy to make-
Councilmember Hall?
Yes, I'm happy to make a motion. I'm trying to ascertain how I strike or remove the component that's related to the use permit for Somersden and the catered food. So, I'm, I can't now-
I have it included in two or three conditions. So, if you reference it, I'll, um, modify everything accordingly.
So, now you made me think. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve, uh, resolution number three zero eight four dash thirteen, uh, amending the components related to the, uh, catered food component for the building A use permit or Somersden Winery. Uh, approving the use permit amendment to establish a limited service restaurant offering pre-made and made-to-order items to go in building B and to allow the restaurant to provide catered food to the adjacent tasting room for food and wine pairings, uh, pardon me. And to allow, ah, that's the part I would strike. So, I'll try to strike that. Um, limited service restaurant, let me try this again. I make a motion, uh, to approve resolution number three zero eight four dash thirteen, approving use permit amendment to establish a limited service restaurant offering pre-made and made-to-order items to go in building B at the, uh, at the site located at six four eight eight Washington Street, APN zero three six zero eight two dash zero two seven. And I don't know if that's going to qualify for what you're looking for, Sandra, and bell to the town attorney.
And any related, uh, conditions?
And any related conditions within the, uh, proposed amendment or resolution?
I'll second.
But just for clarification, specific to the building A, Somersden food and wine pairing component that you've struck from the resolution?
Correct. As stated.
Is that sufficient for staff and town attorney? Heads are nodding in affirmation. Okay. So, you, the amendment is clear to staff?
Yes.
Or the motion, I'm sorry?
And I've seconded it.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
So, three to one vote on that. That, uh, does pass. Uh, congratulations. Thank you very much and, uh, look forward to adding, uh, you to our community very soon.
Very much. I appreciate it.
And thanks to staff for, uh, a very extensive report and a lot of moving parts to this. So, appreciate it.
Thanks.
I'll invite, uh, Vice Mayor Chilton back in if he can, uh, hear me. There he is.
He's there.
We're just taking a moment here as, uh, we're having Vice Mayor return. Any update on Comcast? Are we still offline?
It's a box issue. It's a Comcast set box. We're gonna find more and communicate and understand it when we actually hear from them.
Fair enough. Uh, we welcome back Vice Mayor Chilton and we're going to move on to our administrative regular items. The first one, item fourteen A is Lavender Inn concept review. And I'll just, uh, say that again. This is a concept review. This is not a public hearing or, um, any specific action to be taken, but we will be evaluating the concept, reviewing the concept.
All right. Tonight you have before you a request from Lavender Inn to convert the second floor of the barn shown in this photograph into their ninth guest suite. And as you mentioned, it's a conceptual review only. What the applicant is seeking is feedback to decide whether to proceed with this application in the future. The approved lodging use consists of two guest rooms and a manager's unit in the historic farmhouse at the southwest corner of the property and in six guest rooms that are in two each of the exact, existing detached structures on site. The existing barn is an accessory structure that serves as the linen washing facility, uh, some dif, some storage rooms and as a drive aisle to the parking lot that's in the rear. And that's shown here. The parking la, lot is a five-space lot, shown here, and it's at the northeast corner of the property. The lodging use is a commercial use, um, a commercial retained use in the Old Town Historic Zoning District, and that's a, um, residential district. And both the farmhouse and the barn are listed on the National Register and they're noted for their turn-of-the-century architecture and with association with significant people. So, the proposal is to convert the second floor of the farmhouse to this guest suite. Um, the exterior modifications will include, on this elevation, a new, um, stairwell, a balcony, um, the, the entry door and a window. On this elevation, the west elevation, two new dormer windows. And on this elevation, the south elevation, to replace these openings with a, uh, window. There are no changes proposed for the, the east elevation. The applicant also proposes reconfiguring the parking on the Jefferson Street side of the property, shown in this general location. And the proposal is to eliminate three on-street spaces that are in a parallel configuration and to replace them with five onsite spaces that are in a perpendicular configuration. And the spaces would be located approximately seventy-five percent on the subject property, but encroaching or extending into the right-of-way, um, for approximately twenty-five percent of that stall space. So, about five feet in the right-of-way. Uh, the result would be that ten onsite parking spaces, um, are provided and that's a net gain of two over the existing conditions when you consider the loss of the, the public spaces. As I noted, this property, um, falls into the retained use overlay and it is to, um, the, the commercial use is allowed to continue for Lavender Inn, um, in this zone. The, it may even be modified or expanded, provided that though there are no adverse impacts, and that's to adjoining and surrounding properties as well as to the community as a whole. And so, that's the standard under which to consider this, um, concept before you. The first issue is the FAR issue. And the existing site FAR is point two four eight, which is within the twenty-five percent allowed for commercial structures. The conversion of the second floor of the barn results in an increase in the site FAR to point two nine six. And that's because the barn was not included in the FAR because it's unconditioned space that has not previously been designated a use area. And so, this, uh, increase in FAR is unique in that the barn exists in this current configuration. The FAR relates solely to the conversion of space from a non-use area to a use area and no new building or floor area is proposed. So, the floor area issue is one issue for your consideration today. Um, parking is another issue on the site. And as I showed you earlier, the parking lot at the northeast corner of the property, it has, um, five spaces in it. And the existing use has a minimum parking requirement of ten spaces. So, what we have under existing conditions is a deficit of five spaces. Um, the proposed room addition adds an additional parking space requirement for a total of eleven, but the configuration of these parking spaces on this side to add five will reduce the parking deficit to just one. So, with that issue laid out, there are different aspects of the parking use we want you to consider. Um, and one is the location of onsite parking and a front yard setback that, and the loss of the visible open space that results. It's shown more here on this side of the property. I'll flip through a couple photos. Um, the, the parking would result in the loss of about twenty feet in the depth of landscaping, so that the front end of the parking stalls is about seven feet from this porch. Um, and it's proposed in this location because of the constraints, uh, that faces property. I showed you the rear parking lot, um, and it's bounded by buildings and fences and it, it can't be expanded in size. The only other options are along the property frontage, and this is the frontage on Weber. Um, and this is the frontage on, on Jefferson. Um, and due to the depth of the frontage, it's difficult to screen these spaces with the, and an example of screened spaces is achieved over, uh, at Bordeaux House. And it's, um, a slight screening. It's not as direct as this, these spaces would be. And then I'll just note that while landscaping in and open space would be removed, this property is significantly over the minimum fifteen percent by providing thirty-eight percent, even with the loss of this area right here. Another issue for your consideration is the location of the parking that encroaches five feet into the public right-of-way. So, it's using, um, the public right-of-way for the exclusive use of this business and to satisfy their parking requirement. Um, another issue is the location of the parking under this heritage oak. And it's no, um, this, this oak is mentioned in our heritage oak survey. And all five of the spaces would be under the canopy or the drip line. And it's generally not advised to do compacting and paving under, um, an oak. However, um, there may be paving and stabilization treatments that can be used. Um, and I'm aware of those used in other situations. We haven't yet consulted with the town arborist, but we would have him weigh in on any paving, um, underneath this tree because we want definitely to, um, to save it and make sure we're not doing any measures that would perpetually harm its health. Um, the last issue is that this is a significant reduction in the parking deficit, but it doesn't completely provide the parking needed for this use, although it's only, um, a single, um, parking stall reduction. And the zoning ordinance does require additional parking when there's an expansion of use. And we see the additional parking on site here. Um, and the, it would reduce the inn's parking burden on the street. It would reduce the parking deficit. And it would improve neighborhood conditions, um, as it relates to the inn's use in the neighborhood. So, those are the major issues that we see. Um, and we'd like to get your feedback on those and the applicant would as well.
Okay. Uh, questions of staff about the staff report? Anyone? Not, not at this point? Okay. Then I'll invite our applicant to come forward and please, uh, identify yourself for the record.
Yes, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and councilpeople. Thank you very much for, uh, listening to us tonight. My name's George Ash. I'm the architect for the project. And with me is Shelley Post who is representing the owners. I've been involved with Lavender since nineteen ninety-eight when it was built. I was the original architect that took over the project, um, shortly after it was approved. Um, Roger Post, at the time, my client, um, bought the, bought the property with the approval of the hotel and we built it. Um, I took over and we, um, finished the plans and built the project as it was, exactly as it was approved. And even back then, we had discussed about the barn and perhaps doing something with the second floor of the barn. It's a nice, big space. I was up there today and, uh, me standing in the middle, I still have three or four feet of, above my head at the ridge and it, uh, it only gets a little tight when you go down towards the, the eaves. And that's why we're proposing the, the two dormers. But it's a very nice space and the, try to utilize something in a historic structure other than just a storage, big storage attic has always been appealing to us. Um, but we never approved, I mean, we never proceeded with those plans, uh, over the years. Other things kept coming up. When we did the, uh, original construction of Lavender, we did a significant amount of structural reinforcing of that barn. It was in pretty bad shape when, uh, Roger purchased the property. And we've gone in at, at, when we did, uh, the rest of the buildings and we added some floor structure to reinforce the, the floor and the ceiling. Uh, we added new roof rafters inside to reinforce the roof. You can tell right now there's no sagging. And we added a, a new ridge beam down the center with some posts up above and a couple of beams that go across this way. And then, on the interior of the sidewalls, we added sheer plywood. So, we did a significant amount of work just to keep, you know, keep the structure of the barn going, um, over these years. Now, I know it's been for thirteen or fourteen years now and, uh, you know, at some point in the future, the barn's gonna need a little more tender loving care. If you're standing up there now, you can see daylight coming through, uh, some of those boards that, uh, go into the attic. So, it's gonna, at some point, we're gonna have to do something to, you know, refurbish the barn, um, in addition to what we've already done to the project. So, that got us to thinking that, you know, over the last several years of the economy and, and businesses tough, uh, operating an eight-room inn is becoming more and more of a challenge. And so, we resurrected these ideas and plans and thought that it was, now might be a good opportunity to provide the complete and total refurbishment of the barn, um, while improving the, uh, viability of the lavender. And also, um, we came up with the parking idea to try to alleviate some of the parking concerns that have, um, been with the lavender throughout the, the years that we've, uh, that they've been in business. Um, I think we can work, uh, closely with an arborist, either the town arborist or an outside arborist to park under the tree. We're not thinking about doing asphalt or something like that. We would do something that was compatible to the tree and make sure that there would be no harm done to the tree. And at this point, we haven't pursued that, but if an arborist says, hey, you can't do it, well, then we're gonna not do it. I mean, we're not gonna pursue it. We're gonna only come, we'd only come back with a proposal that met, uh, the guidelines of any arborist that said this is not gonna harm the tree. I mean, there's already streets that are paving over the, the canopy and the canopy hangs over the house. I mean, there's all, already lots of things going on there, so we don't want to add to that. Um, the FAR, that's an interesting kind of a conundrum there because the, the structures are, exist. There'll be no visible increase, um, to, uh, by the naked eye that the FAR has been increased, um, on a structural basis. Now, um, there, there was in this, and thank you, by the way, for your staff report. That was a very nicely written staff report and one of the, the more thorough staff reports that I've had the, uh, pleasure of reading in any of my projects over the years that I've been doing this. So, I appreciate that. Um, the, uh, in that staff report, there was a proposal back in, um, I think it was August or October from the, uh-
What group was that?
Oh, from Keller, uh, about rezoning, um, the French Laundry property to commercial. And at that time, I think they came to you with, on a similar basis, to get some feedback. And, um, the discussion of, uh, including Lavender and also Bordeaux House in that came up. And, um, while they received, I, from what I read in the staff report, favorable, uh, comments from you, they haven't pursued that. And I think that we'd be willing to sort of keep the ball rolling on that if it became part of the, um, approval process for something like this in order to solve some of these other issues like FAR. And so, I mean, that, that, the owners of Lavender are, are open to, uh, pursuing that zoning change to facilitate this project as well as the other two properties. Um, I think that's about it. I think this, uh, it's, it's a good opportunity, like I said, to, um, bring the barn back to full life and, and- I think that's about it. I think this it's a good opportunity, like I said, to bring the barn back to full life and and solve some of the town's problems. And Lavender are a much more viable part of the community. I stated in my letter, I don't know if you had a chance to read that, that, you know, they've been a good part of the community now for 13, 14 years, and I want to continue to do that. Right.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, the land
If you
The winter's been tough on the landscaping.
You're welcome to participate. We have to be able to hear you.
No, no, I won't say too much, but I know this looks really ugly. So we would, I mean, just quite honestly, it does. But, you know, obviously, when we remove that bull's court, which obviously no one plays bull on my bull's court. So just removing that, then we could fix up that landscaping there and actually make it look nice again because obviously, we're not growing anything in the in the bull's court, and not much wants to grow right underneath that oak very well. And many of you know, it's been ripped out many, many times over the years. So to have the parking spots go in there and then having landscaping in where the bull's court is, I think would make enhance the overall appearance of that side of of the building.
I'm not sure, Shelley, if we got your name for the recording.
I'm sorry. My name is Shelley Post.
Thank you.
All right. So there is a this is significant still landscape buffer between the front of the car, which is actually only about 16 feet, 7, 15 feet into the property. And if there are compact car regulations, we can also use small spaces if that is what it helps.
I do want to share because we talked about it. If you look in the picture, you'll see that where that line is driven, when when Sandra talks about using five feet of the public right-of-way, we're actually using less of this street than they would currently with a vehicle parking parallel along there. And again, the council, you've asked us in various locations to try to be creative on how to maximize and improve parking where we can. And we think, you know, we challenge the the folks here to work with us with that goal, and we actually think we have something that merits consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
I'll invite anybody else. Sure. Actually, let me just before I invite the public, are there any specific questions? Councilmember Mueller of our applicant?
I was just curious because this is on the National Historic Records List. Have you had any contact with the California State Historic Preservation Office to see if there's any issues or if you just haven't even had a chance to talk to them yet? Is this your first step?
We haven't had it yet. We haven't had a chance to talk to them specifically about this project, but I'm an architect in Monterey and have done projects on several historic structures in Monterey and worked closely with historians and historical reporters down there. So I have a sense that we're not going to be running into problems as long as we maintain the integrity of the exterior, which we plan to. But whatever that is, and we have to go through that step, so whatever that turns out to be.
Dormers might be.
Correct.
You know.
Right.
And so because this has a historical listing, is it your assumption, maybe you don't even know that no federal money's ever been associated with its restoration or anything, so it wouldn't preclude any of that from maybe happening?
To the best of my knowledge, no federal money's been
Okay. All right. Then you should have a good discussion with them. All right. Thanks.
Mr. Ash.
Vice Mayor.
No, no problem. Let me ask you a question. Thank you for your presentation. You referred several times that you were the original architect for 13 years ago. Can you you give, or this may go to staff at some point, some background on that renovation? Was that simply an updating of the property? Did you add rooms? What's the historical context of that change?
Sure. I don't know what year the original project was approved. I think Turnbull was the architect on that.
It says 1979 in the staff report.
Okay. So 1979, there was an approval. And the only thing that existed on the property at that time was the main house, the historic house there and the barn. The other three buildings did not exist. So when Roger purchased the property, the use permit was to build those three buildings. And in in doing that, we also refurbished the and did a significant remodel on the house interior-wise. We did a lot of work on the on the house, and we updated the house. There was no foundation. We had to add some foundation. A lot of siding was rotten. We had to replace the siding. And so that's why I know we've already had a his history with dealing with this property. And I know that they're they were thrilled that we brought that all back up to, you know.
Yeah. Secretary of Interior Standards.
Right. Exactly. Yeah. So the that was the project back in 1998 was to completely refurbish the old barn, the old house, build those three buildings that have two units each in them. And then we refurbished, we didn't actually, we took that upon ourselves to bring the barn to get it so it wouldn't fall down.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I will ask one question since we've recaptured you here.
Yes.
The additional use going on in the barn, is there any proposed to change what's going on in there?
No. No, this is there's some laundry. There's a couple of, there's a laundry room, a storage room, and a restroom on the first floor.
Right.
Yeah, as you drive through.
Because I was I was wondering what impacts those uses might have on a guest suite above versus storage up above if that's not a concern that you have.
No. It would just be a sound deadening issue when we do the refurbishing of to build the room. We would have to take, you know, deal with that sound. We do that all the time. There's kitchens.
You aren't going to get to the point of having to relocate any of those
No.
operations.
Absolutely not. No other work will be done on the on the existing property other than the parking and the second floor of the barn. Everything else will be exactly status quo.
Okay.
As is.
Great. Thank you very much. I think I think we'll let you sit down this time for sure unless
I'm not sure.
No, fine.
Okay. Thank you.
I invite our members of the public that are here, if they'd like to comment on the concept. Again, we're just talking about an initial concept here, but seeing no one come forward, I'll invite council to give some feedback and direction. I'll start with Councilmember Mueller and work our way back.
Okay. I do think I think everyone's agreed to contact an arborist about the Heritage Oak Tree. You know, you pick two. One will say this, and one will say that. So interview them carefully to see whether you want them to say, as that's kind of been my experience. So but I do think that is something important that we need to do. There might be some some, you know, new things out there all the time. And the only other thing that I would condition for the approval is because we have to go through SEQA is to get a historical evaluation by a qualified consultant, which I think you want to do anyway, so you probably don't want to have to remove anything that you put in inadvertently. So those are the only two things. Everything else is fine with me that I would probably put as a condition of approval. It'd be great if we could actually have the this information prior to approval so that it would be slide on through.
Thank you. Councilor Hall?
Yes, and thank you for the presentation tonight. It's interesting to see the person who was here 10, 15 years ago for a project come back again. And I guess my first comment is with regard to the FAR, I mean, it is a little awkward that we're we would be changing, that the calculation of the FAR would put you outside of the limit when you've already got the footprint. So I'm not sure I would deal with that. I think I'm probably okay, given that the trade-off would be an additional night's room revenue, 300 some odd nights a year at some rate. So and given that it's already there, you're just using it for storing things. I'm not totally concerned with that. The parking under the tree is probably the biggest challenge I see with the project. I mean, God only knows what's gonna happen when you start looking at what you gotta do to get under that oak tree. We just recently, if you read the local paper, had an oak tree drop or fall or slide or whatever it did. But, you know, caveat emptor, I would just say that, you know, obviously, those that that tree is an important part of this property, and we'd hate to see any impact of that. Yeah, outside of that, I mean, I think it makes a lot of sense, the parking that you're proposing, assuming we can do it with the tree there. And, you know, I noticed what the town manager said is that, you know, the impact to the street is actually less with regards to the cars coming out. And that's by the diagram here. I don't know what that means in reality or practicality, but, you know, it's it's more of a softening effect on that. And, yeah, I would be just fine with it as it is presented. I don't understand enough about SEQA to echo what what Councilmember Mueller said, but I'm sure she's done her research on that. And it sounds like you've had experienced this property already. So, I mean, I think conceptually, it makes sense to me.
Councilwoman Dornbecker.
Thank you. And I have some of the same concerns, although I have wondered as I walked by and never saw anyone using the bull cord, although I thought it was a bocce court. But I've often thought, well, what a waste of space, unfortunately. So I think that actually, that parking plan makes a lot of sense. I like that creative way to use the parking. And the one thing I do see also is the tree. And that I guess we'd have to see what the report from the arborist said and how, because you wouldn't want that falling on your guest's car either. I don't think that the FAR calculation, since it's not the footprint of the building is not changing at all, I don't think it's a problem personally for me. And the historic evaluation of the barn, I defer to Councilmember Mueller. She knows a lot about that. So I think that that's a something important that you'll need to do. But otherwise, I think it would, you know, it makes a lot of sense, and I can understand you wanting to have an additional room in the towny old building.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I will quickly agree on the the tree issue. I'm I'm personally unqualified to assess that. I don't have a problem with it as long as it can be properly mitigated. So that's my answer on the tree. I my initial reaction on the parking spaces is a little bit negative because I think one of the beauties of this, particularly this property, is if you're coming down Jefferson Street, it's easy not to realize that it's a hotel or an inn. And I feel like changing that parking makes it fairly obvious. That being said, that street is probably one of the worst parking streets in town. I would say primarily due to the lack of parking around the French Laundry. So that loss of residential character may not be shared by the residents around. So I I think that's a trade-off. I do appreciate the creativity there. So that is a it's a concern I have, but if the tree can be mitigated and it helps parking in a very challenging area, then it's probably a net positive. I also completely agree on the FAR exemption. There is an existing structure there. There'll be no outside really impact whatsoever visually. Our, you know, if this was a brand-new structure, we've changed our ordinances recently to deal a little bit more with those structures or heights of ceilings that that are not used. But this is this is a situation where you have a beautiful old building, and to use it makes sense. And to say you need to leave it empty for no reason doesn't make sense. So I certainly support the FAR exemption. My request, I guess, from staff, if this if this does go forward, is if we can look for any documents that we might have from 1998. And the reason I ask for that in terms of the approvals or the staff reports, et cetera, is this 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 situation has the potential to remind me of situations where people come in and say, we know we're out of compliance, but we won't ever ask for X. And then you come back 13 years later and say, oh, well, maybe we do want to put a hotel room in that in that barn. And where that that brings me to my last comment, where my my biggest concern about this situation is we have a non-conforming parking situation. And I understand the idea of making it better, but we have told other applicants, and I'm going to be very specific, we said to the French Laundry when they were talking about rezoning of what are you going to do about the fact that you're totally out of conformance with our current parking regulations? Where are you going to put parking if you do this? And I can see the easy situation of them saying, you didn't require this applicant to come in and come up to parking conformance, so why should we have to do that? So I that's my most uncomfortable piece is we are allowing for a an intensified use. Granted, it's one parking space, when it really comes down to it. And you can make the argument that it's less intensive because there's more parking spaces on the situation. But now I feel like every applicant who's out of conformance will come to us and say, well, at least it's better than it is today. I don't want to be in conformance because previous applicants haven't been. So that's my that's my number one concern, and I'm not sure if staff can help assuage that concern for me in some way.
Thank you. I won't repeat. I had similar concerns, oak tree, historic nature of the farmhouse. I won't need to go into details there. The I agree with with what the vice mayor just said about less non-compliant. I'd like for you to consider, if you haven't already, on Weber, if there is the opportunity that you're looking at on Jefferson, to do a similar or same thing. If you've already looked at it and it's not feasible, that would be an answer. But I would just like to have you look at that if you haven't already. You could actually maybe get another one or two that would put you at or above your minimum. So that's that's just one thought. And I think you can, as you do your calculations with those five spaces, I'm not concerned about it making it look more commercial. It needs to be more functional. If there's any way to get those cars further in without destroying the the landscaping along the side of the primary inn building, I know you'll do what you can, but I agree with the comments that have been made about there's already less of an impact on the street. So if, you know, the the back bumpers of some of these cars are sticking out, they're sticking out less than they would have been. I get a little nervous when we have people now having to back out into the middle of Jefferson from this perpendicular parking, but it's not like we don't see that all around. So I think, you know, people's practices can be altered and expectations can be altered. I don't see creating visual safety hazards with this. We've had an issue further up on the north part of Washington Street where diagonal parking has impacted some of the residents' ability to see the right-of-way. I don't see that happening here because your initial perpendicular spaces are far from the corner. So I don't I don't I don't anticipate that being a problem that we create accidentally. So very, very little alarming about this, but I do think that coming into compliance as opposed to just almost getting there would certainly be a goal that I would strive to achieve if and then frankly, explain why you can't get there. If it's a desire to not impact on the part of the property, maybe we work with that.
We actually talked about that, part doing that same parking.
Okay. So that can be, as you're moving forward, working with staff, we can find out in our report, assuming we see this again, the reasons for or against trying to make something like that happen. So are there any, I think we've all given our feedback. I think at least you get a consensus of it's worthwhile to move forward. So I think that's kind of our general message for you tonight. Staff, need anything else?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Let's move right along to 14B Vandeleer Park Utility Undergrounding Project.
Evening, Mayor Dunbar, council. This is coming back to you from our last meeting. So out there at Heston, they're under construction. They've been doing some work. They did go out and get four bids. The low bidder came back and said that they had a error in their bid when they reviewed and discussed the bid with the group with Heston. It was still below the second low bidder. So there's a letter attached to the staff report explaining what happened. We're still recommending that the town council move forward with the agreement, and the new agreement with the new amount is included in the staff report. I don't know if the town manager wants anything else to add.
I'd like to ask Arnold, if you can give us your legal interpretation of, is that cool? You know? I mean, seriously, I realize that if they still came in as the low bid, but can you is this considered changing the playing field for for the others? Or is this really a technical typo?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, to it is cool.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, to, it is cool. It's cold, actually, but it's cool. But yes, it is a recognition that there was an error, there was communication to staff, and in this, now, certainly the council could reject the bid if you chose to do so, but you also have within your discretion the ability to approve the bid and enter into this new revised agreement for this new revised amount.
So would the, is it fair for the conclusion to be drawn that because the other bids were still higher than the adjusted or corrected low bid, that those bids would not be going down? Those bids would be going up like the lowest bid had to go up?
I need to provide a little clarification. This is not a publicly bid project. This is a private development reimbursement agreement. What is actually unique here is that this particular private developer shared with us all of the bids in which they solicited. So I just wanted the council and the public to understand that while we're using some similar nomenclature, this is not a typical situation where the town has went out and bid, and Mr. Slater went to the effort of explaining what happened. He feels really bad, especially after he came to us with that number. We've reviewed it, we went back and looked at it. He's been very candid with all of us, because my first reaction was not a polite reaction, and we wanted to make sure, and I do feel in this particular case that an error was made. So our, your option at this point is to adjust the dollar amount, enter into the reimbursement agreement, in which case we will have the utility undergrounding work along that stretch of Washington completed as an extension of the private development condition for the project, or to say no, and in that case, we will not proceed, we will not do any utility undergrounding.
So I think that's a very important point that the council and the public understand, that we're not addressing the actual bid process, we're addressing this as a budget item. Whether we want to invest in this, basically it's a public-private partnership here for, for this public development to do this work for us that we cannot otherwise afford to do on our own, is what.
This adjustment does not cost the taxpayers any additional funds, it's being reimbursed by the developer.
No, the way around.
No. We're paying $20,000 more to complete the project.
And the applicant's paying 20, or $10,000 more. So it's a one-third, two-thirds split, so they're paying additional money too.
And the point is, this is not an adjustment, they're charging more, it's, there is a technical error in the amount of the distance involved, and it was corrected.
There was a technical error in the calculation of the bid, and when updated, that particular low bidder still ended up being the low bid amongst the four bidders that this developer sought proposals to do this work.
Okay, yeah, Vice Mayor, question?
I read the, the letter from Blue Mountain Enterprises, which I assume is the contractor for Heston. He states in there that, I called him and informed the estimator, left out, I asked him to stand by his original proposal, and he told me specifically he was not able to do that at this time. Does he have the ability to, to pull that and say, "I just, I know I submitted that, but I, I can't do it," and back out?
Private contracting is different.
This is private contracting, right? I mean, this is not a public process.
Yep, private contracting is different, this is not a, a public contracting. What I would say is, I, I think it's in most cases, you have agreements and contracts, and if somebody forces somebody to enter into a contract, you could see where that goes, but you might end up spending more in legal costs in this particular case.
I assume this was not a process where they went out and said, by submitting this bid, you are legally bound to perform the work, if it's private.
Well, Arnold can correct me if I'm wrong, but usually we would have a bid bond if it was a public project, and they would have time to back out, but they'd have to pay the bond, so I don't know if you have anything else to add.
That's correct. I mean, if there's an error, there is the ability for the, for the bidder who submits a, a bid, a bona fide bid with an error, to request from the public agency to withdraw their bid.
Okay, the only reason I ask this, I have no intention of saying we should go after this guy, is that it's reasonable in this situation that, I mean, the obvious thing you would think is, oh, he saw that he had $40,000 left on the table. But in fact, the risk of just saying, "I want to change the price," or "I'll back out," may mean he really wants to back out. I mean, you all are telling us it's legitimate, that makes a big difference.
It is, and what I would also say in this particular case, we were prepared to look at that. If they would have went to their second-low bidder, our costs would be higher. They've sat down and made sure that the contractor is going to do the work and is committed to that, and they've assured us, and they've also, you'll note in the agreement, that this is a guaranteed not-to-exceed. I mean, it's really unfortunate, because I think had this number been presented in December.
Of course.
It wouldn't have changed. And what's really, it's just awkward, and like I say, Mr. Slater feels professionally very disappointed, because he takes a lot of pride in, in what he's prepared and what we did. Like I say, staff spent some time to try to address and make sure that the council's concerned with, oh, there's money to be at. No, I don't feel that way in this case.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about this report from council? Any member of the public like to comment about it? No? Okay. Is there action to be had on this item?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Further comment? Councilor Hall.
Yeah, I mean, really, the decision boils down to, aside from the $20,000 in addition, still being the lowest bid, do we feel that it's a worthwhile project to undertake the undergrounding now at the shared cost with Heston, who's in the process of completing a project on Washington? Or if we're not happy with this $20,000 increment, which I'm clearly not happy with, do we punt and try to figure this out at some other time, at some different cost, which would certainly exceed the proposals that we have in front of us today? I mean, that is ultimately what this boils down to. And I guess, you know, my perspective on it is, you know, Vandeleer Park, having gone down the street just today and looked at it, you know, it would clearly benefit from the underground, there's no doubt. It just doesn't, if this was back in December, it would feel a lot better doing this than it does right now, when it doesn't, when it feels like it was potentially underhanded, although we're being told it's not. So, again, I think that in general, we would all want the work done, we just wish it were presented properly the first time.
Any comments? I would, I would agree, and just to add that I do not anticipate us being able to do this project in the near or even distant future on our own. We have already discussed in previous budget conversations about how incredibly, incredibly expensive the undergrounding is per foot, and without, I don't see any project in this neighborhood that we can potentially partner with that can be as financially beneficial to us as this one. So I, I do agree that this seems like an error, not something more, more negative, sinister than that. Councilmember Dornbecker?
I was just going to go ahead and make.
Yeah, I think if there's still further questions, Vice Mayor has a comment, and then we'll address your motion.
Being a private situation, my other assumption is, even with this price change, if we went out on a public bidding process with prevailing wage, et cetera, the price of this would be much higher.
There's two components. One, I think that would be the case, and the other thing would be our administrative costs for designing, the public works directors, our costs for issuing the RFP, and all of those things add into it, so.
Oh, yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 3085-13 to authorize the town manager to enter into a reimbursement agreement with the Chia Julan Trust in the amount of $93,131,066 for completion of the Vandeleer Park Utility Undergrounding Project, and approve a budget adjustment 2012-13-04 for $20,000 in funding this undergrounding work.
I'll second.
And I'll just ask our acting town clerk tonight to note the typo in that sentence just before we have the actual resolution. For completion of the Vandeleer, it says of for. So we do have a motion and a second on this item. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you very much. Next up, 14C, Yountville Municipal Code Introduction and First Reading of this new ordinance.
Mayor and council, real briefly, this is a partnership in, between the town attorney's office and staff. One of the things we identified recently was that we did not have the formal procedure to officially debar bad contractors. And we've had some experiences lately, and one of the things that staff wanted to do is officially do that, because in the public process, there's a format you need to go to in order to say, "We've gone through, give the person their due notice, but you know, this contractor did not perform well in, or adhere to contract requirements, et cetera, a variety of things." A lot of public agencies don't do that, but it's really important when you do, because when we do background checks on contractors, and you find that they've been debarred, or they had problem experiences in other organizations, that gives you a basis for, for not doing work with that. So in short, we worked with Arnold's staff, and what you're adopting tonight is simply the process by which we would formally put in place a process that would allow staff to pursue debarment against contractors, and it lays out the grounds and process. If you have any more detailed questions about the actual process, I'm sure Arnold would be happy to answer that, but really, it's a pretty straightforward process in terms of what we're trying to do.
Any questions, Councilmember Mueller?
Yes, fully understand the debarment proceedings, but it seems like we have a separate activity in here, which is suspension. So why don't we talk about that in the title and in the whereas's like we do through the rest of the document? Do you not see suspension as a separate action from debarment? Then my second question is, if we are going to suspend somebody, 120 days seems to put the onus on us, not a very long time. I'm open to increasing that, six months, a year? So those are my two comments.
Okay, if we can have town attorney address that?
The reason, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the reason that you do not see the suspension language in the heading is because this is truly a debarment process. The suspension is a stopgap process. It is an opportunity for the town to put that contractor on hold, not award the contract. And the reason that it is a 120-day period is to provide for expeditions due process for the contractor. This ordinance is intended to provide an opportunity for both to protect the town, but also if a contractor is to be debarred, they have a right to make claims to proper hearing and due process. So if we extended it out six months or a year for a suspension period, what we're really doing at that point is debarbing them de facto by that suspension.
Which was something I kind of like.
Yeah, I, I, we recognize that the town and our office probably enjoy that also.
Okay.
The courts wouldn't be too thrilled about that.
I see. All right, thanks.
Any other questions about the staff report? Vice Mayor?
Arnold, my follow-up question on that has to do with, I, I can think of contractors I'd like to debar. By doing that, though, let's say it's after a project has been completed, and we don't want to have to deal with them in the future, do we open ourselves, how much do we open ourselves up to being sued by that contractor saying, "You're doing this, and you are causing me not to have future business at other jurisdictions"?
We do open ourselves up to that potential. If we are going to, if the town is going to debar a contractor, we'd want to make sure that we have sufficient evidence, have all our i's dotted, t's crossed. There are recent projects that come to mind, that the town is engaged in, that there is a substantial amount of evidence that was, that would warrant debarment, as we explored that for future consideration. The problem was, we had, we did not have the mechanisms in place in our current municipal code, and that's what led to this, to the language before you, the statement for introduction.
I guess that brings up the question of, is this relatively common in California with jurisdictions to do this? And has there been, you know, have the courts kind of settled that, yes, this is a proper path to take?
It is, it is not common, but then again, it does exist in many jurisdictions. The reason that it's not common is because a lot of times, that type of action, how can I put it, takes, when, when you are presented with a series of bids, the town must evaluate to select the lowest responsible bidder. The term responsible is, is one which is a value judgment of the town, the council ultimately, working with staff. So a lot of agencies just fall upon the language of the public contract code to somewhat debar without actually doing that process. That runs, that can run afoul also and run into some problems, because a contractor can say, "Well, I am responsible, what makes you think I'm not?" This process avoids having a contractor come in at a low bid, at the lowest bid, and then argue the fact that they've worked for the town before, and you did not take action to prohibit them from taking, from, from working for the town in the future, and therefore they are a responsible bidder.
Thank you.
My, my only question, Arnold, relates to the debarment hearing officer appointment, and in the staff report, it says, it is recommended that the planning director be appointed as that officer, but it does not call out for that on page seven, you know, 8.05.070. It just says, "The town manager shall appoint a fair and impartial debarment hearing officer." So are we saying that it's likely that the recommendation will be the, the planning director, but it's not required by this language?
That would be correct, because in some cases, the contractor may be a vendor that, a consultant, and, you know, that worked in planning, so it can't be a one-size-fits-all. I mean, we more typically think about a streets contractor, for example, or something, but it could be a range of people that are under contract providing services.
So this is just an example of?
It is correct.
The type of appointment that you might make?
And it also varies. We have a very lean staff here, so when you have to find somebody that's not directly involved, you know, Samantha might get stuck on something. More than likely, the finance director would not be able to, because in some cases, the finance director and itself are generally involved in the administration or signature. So that's why it's a little more challenging.
But it's, it's loose or even silent on the requirements of a debarbing officer, that it could be anybody that you appoint.
That's correct. The town managers designate.
It could be a retired contractor, a public works director from another agency. The ordinance gives more flexibility, the staff report gives the, the town council the insight as to what's probably going to happen.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one, and that, my question is, is it rare that municipalities might, might have this debarment process, or is it, I mean, how, how, you know, how common or not uncommon is it?
Yes, Councilwoman, and I think I need to follow up on a question asked by the Vice Mayor, and I can wrap it up into this answer. In my experience, in my 30-plus years of practicing law, it is very rare. There, there is case law that, that defines a debarment process and that, that contractors take on in a public agency. There are fairly clear standards, though, on what would constitute debarment. It's, it's laid out here in your, in the ordinance, so while it is rare, even if you do, even if you never take the step to debar any contractor, it would still be our recommendation to have this, excuse me, have this tool in the toolbox of the municipal code.
Thank you.
So I think, just to be clear, because I'm not sure I'm clear on this, the Vice Mayor's question was, if I understood it correctly, how often does debarment happen? I think Councilmember Dornbecker's question is, how common is the language, the ordinance? And you're saying that both are very infrequent. I, I think that's the two questions combined.
The, the language of the ordinance is patterned against other communities' debarment ordinances. So this is something that we just conjured up, and we, we studied other, other... We studied other, other municipalities and their debarment ordinances. We examine existing case law in evaluating due process requirements. That, we feel, we present to you, in working with staff, the best debarment ordinance that you can have. Going back to the question, however, of how often will you use this, it will be rare. Now, we, well, let me also put, we hope it would also be rare, unless you have contractors who just don't do their jobs.
Okay. Councilmember Hall?
So, then, is the debarment process, is that, or ordinance, is that used in a way as a discouragement from a contractor taking those actions or having this found against them? Meaning that, any contractor that was to do business with the town of Yountville would recognize there's a debarment process that's available as our, at our discretion, should they fall within the guidelines of what we've presented here in the ordinance? Is that correct?
That is correct. If you look at the, at page five, the grounds for debarment, and that carries over to page, page six. One of the appropriate grounds for debarment by, by our public agency is item B, which is debarment of that person, which also includes the contractor, and the person is defined under the ordinance, by another governmental agency.
Right.
So, if someone else does the heavy lifting in debaring a contractor, we can ride those coattails, if you will, and say, "Our ordinance says you've been debarred over there, you don't get to work here."
Right.
So, it is, it is a pretty significant step. That's why there's all these due process provisions that could have an effect, or ripple effect, to that contractor for their work in other public agencies.
So, we can ask on their, for them to check a box in the RFP if they've been debarred?
Correct.
And we do. We have a bidder questionnaire, which they fill out, and that's one of the questions.
Debarment specifically?
It's claims and a few other things. I don't know if, it, we would figure it out based on the questionnaire.
We'll make sure we have it on a go-forward basis, once this becomes, if it becomes part of the-
Might as well send the flag up the pole if we're going to approve it.
Okay. One last question, Councilmember Dornbecker?
This sort of is my question about that. Then, when we are negotiating with a contractor, do we have to disclose this?
No. It, once it becomes part of our municipal code, I would imagine we would make it part of the bidding package, just so that it's full and complete, but are we required to by law? No.
I see.
And I also want to point out that we don't negotiate contracts-
Yeah.
...because it's low bid, so it's, we put together a bid package, they submit their bid schedule, and then essentially, we either accept their bid or reject the bids. Some agencies do, well, they will reject all the bids and then go back out to bid.
Thank you.
Any public comment about this proposed ordinance? No?
Would you like a motion?
We're not, we're not being televised, so you don't have to be shy about being on TV. Okay, so this is a, what is it? Introduction and first reading?
That is correct. It will come back to you if it's, if it's introduced tonight, come back to you at your next meeting for adoption.
So, is there action to introduce and waive the reading of this?
I can do that. I'd like to introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance number 410-13, an ordinance of the town of Yountville, adding chapter 8.05 to the Town of Yountville Municipal Code entitled Contractor Debarment.
Second?
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much. That's passed unanimously. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Town Attorney, I just want to thank you for bringing this forward. This reminds me in many ways of our town manager, and since we hired you all, is, it's hard for us to know what's out there and what's missing, so all of these opportunities that come forward and things that other jurisdictions have done, and clean up our code and make them stronger, please continue to bring those kind of things to us.
And I should note, it's a collective effort with Steve and with Graham, and we're very happy to be part of that process.
I think frankly, this is, when I was reading it, one of those things that I was surprised we didn't already have in place, so.
There's a few more we're working on.
Okay.
I'm sure there is.
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
Next up, town council boards, committees, commissions, ad hoc subcommittees, annual review. I did want to just make one comment about League of California Cities North Bay Division, the reference that I, I am no longer the president, I am now the past president. That's a, just to update our record on that. So, do we have a, a kind of a formal presentation about this, or are we just reviewing this?
No, Mayor, Council, this is an opportunity for you to review your assignments and appointments and make any adjustments or changes as the collective council may so determine.
And I do want to thank staff for providing the summaries of all of these. I know, as a new council member, of whom we have none, would have been great to have it. And so, just a reminder of the frequency of the mission of each of these committees. So, thank you for providing that now and in the future. Does Council have any questions, desires, challenges to the appointments as they are presented? If not, we can move right ahead. And I do know that the Vice Mayor's term with LAFCO is ending in May, if you wanted to address that.
I was going to make a quick comment on that. I am not only the Town of Yountville's representative, but the Up Valley representative on LAFCO, which ends this coming May. I can't believe I've been on that for four years. And what typically happens is that there's a rotating schedule between the councils, the three Up Valley cities. I believe that Calistoga, Jack Jingles was on the rotation before us, and it came to Yountville's turn. And my assumption, although I'm not 100% clear, is that St. Helena will be next. I will, I'll make this offer to you as well, but I will likely contact the new mayor of St. Helena, when that person is appointed, I assume, next week, and let them know that if they desire to have me continue, I will do so, and if they want to appoint someone from the council in St. Helena to that position, that of course, that's their prerogative. But I certainly have a lot of knowledge now after four years, so I am going to, I'm going to put that out there for them and to Calistoga as well.
So, just one thing of note, this actually came up with our city selection committee, and now that I say that, I don't remember looking at the city selection-
It's on there.
I was the chair, I am no longer the chair. I don't know if it referenced that or not. No, it just lists me as, as on there, so that's fine. The association of Bay Area governments had to be changed, because Mayor Jingles from Calistoga was the representative. That is now changed to American Canyon Mayor Leon Garcia, and the alternate is St. Helena Councilmember Anne Navarro. And I did just want to mention, with the LAFCO seats, what I didn't realize is there is a South Valley seat, a North Valley seat, but a single alternate. And the single alternate is the alternate for both seats. So, that might be why, I mean, there is a non-designation for the alternative for North Valley, because that is, by default and definition, still Juliana Inman at this point, who is listed, at least on my membership sheet here, as the South Valley, but she's technically the alternate for both.
There is one suggestion that I'd like to make with the council's concurrence. With the action taken today, I believe we can effectively eliminate the Town Hall Structural Strengthening Ad-Hoc Subcommittee for Financing. I believe their work has concluded.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I don't think the two ad hoc members should have the authority to dissolve their own committee.
From that committee?
Pure conflict.
We're very efficient.
I'm just looking at government efficiency and eliminating redundant and unnecessary bodies.
So, there is no, there's no financial oversight kind of activity? It's all, that's, that's all your business and Kathleen's business?
It's all of yours business when it comes to that.
Specifically on a daily basis, which I know the ad hoc committee was active on a daily basis.
Very nice.
One day here, one day there. So, there is a recommendation by the town manager to dissolve that subcommittee, and someone other than the ad hoc committee members may make a motion to dissolve that?
I so moved that we dissolve the ad hoc committee for financial oversight for the-
Town Hall-
Town Hall restructuring project.
I'll second.
Structural strengthening. All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you for that. Now, we do still have a need, though, for the ad hoc subcommittee for the project itself.
That is correct.
Doesn't look done to me, so.
We still have a committee for that.
They actually have work to do, yep.
Okay, so is that, are we, are we good after that?
I think so.
So, are we looking at a formal action, or you just have that reaffirmation?
There's all this highlighted, it's all this highlighted stuff. Do we need to do something about that, or are there, does that mean questions, or do we need changing?
The question was, the highlighted was just confirmation. For example, we have Councilmember Mueller and Dornbecker are continuing on league policy committees. I also serve on a league policy committee. We will correct the past president for the division. And then a couple of those highlights, changes on individual members of boards and commissions, that'll be changing, just to aware, make you aware of some opening.
And for gay and youth violence, do we, it says authorize, designate, to be determined. Is that something we need to do?
Where's that?
Isn't that Richard?
Sheriff liaison for Yountville.
That's a comma. Authorize, designate.
Right, but that's not, I don't think-
That's just the name of the sheriff?
No, I think, I don't know. It's who they authorize, it's not who we authorize necessarily. Right, I'm the councilperson associated with that commission.
Yeah.
I think that what they're saying, there's a sheriff liaison for Yountville.
And the, and that liaison by the sheriff's department.
Is to be determined.
It's not chosen by us, it's the sheriff's representative.
Oh, I see, okay.
Isn't that correct?
Correct. Yes. You work with a sheriff's representative.
That's correct.
I see.
So, Council, Vice Mayor Chilton and Councilmember Hall are very well aware that I was just voted the vice chair of NICLOG.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Because they nominated and-
That's right.
If we, we make that designation for the NICLOG, or if we just leave it as voting members.
And I was just elected as vice chair of the Upper Valley Waste Management Authority.
There you go. You should-
So, do we designate those executive committee?
No, those are typically, those are appointments of the body that you're on, not of the town. We appoint the person that goes to it. We'll make a note so that we have those titles corrected. More often than not, especially with NICLOG, that usually means that when you assume the chair, it creates more work for staff.
I didn't assume anything. You can look to my left and my right for those responsible.
However, there is a rotation, so we would have got it anyway.
Or could have deferred to another city. Anyway, that's moot. So, do you need any formal action, or just that's?
No, I think we're okay. If you were changing something, we would ask for minute action at least to do that, but you're, from what I'm sensing is there's no change in appointments, other than the correction that we're talking about.
That's correct. So, let's move on to item 14E, resolution approving tax-exempt financing, compliance, policy, and procedure, et cetera.
Yes. Not nearly as exciting as the issuance of the bonds themselves. However, this is a necessary policy that we are asking you to approve this evening, and it has to do with tax-exempt compliance, which goes beyond the initial issuing of the bonds, but ongoing through the life of the bonds. And the IRS does prefer to see a written policy, and with the help of our financial advisor, we have drafted such a policy, and we are asking you to approve it. Additionally, we are also asking you to give your blessing, if you will, to use a service called MuniVault, where we will be, we'll be able to post all of our compliance type of postings that are required, and stay current on changes in compliance requirements, and have some help from Columbia Capital if we need to comply with changing IRS requirements or any audits or inquiries that might come through over the life of the bonds. And this will apply not only to the newly issued bonds, but also our 2008 lease revenue bonds and our lease on our flood law. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions about the staff report? Is there action to be taken?
I'll make a motion.
Councilmember Mueller?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number 3086-13, approving a tax-exempt financing compliance policy and procedure, and authorizing the town manager to maintain the policy as required to comply with the Internal Revenue Code.
Second?
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Now, the fun starts. Item 14F, resolution approving updated position descriptions for maintenance worker and other related positions. Town manager?
Mayor, Council, I'll try to be brief on this item. Typical, we review all of our job descriptions when we have a position vacancy, and as you know, we recently have had a position vacancy in the maintenance worker one, two ranks in the Public Works Municipal Operations Division. With considerable input from the Public Works Director, our Public Works Manager, input in meetings with our employees, today, we are recommending several significant changes to our job descriptions. One is a, an update of the maintenance worker one and two job description, encompassing on the complete circle and range of work that it does. Secondly, we're also improving and enhancing some of the certifications and training requirements. We're also coming to the realization that in our public works, we have some succession planning, some technology updates, and some areas that we haven't necessarily stayed as focused and abreast on, especially in the area of the water distribution services as far as state mandated training. So, we're recommending a new job description, a water service worker one and two, that would be benchmarked to similar salary ranges as our existing wastewater treatment operators. Job descriptions in there, real focus on this right now is we only have one of our six employees, one of our, excuse me, five employees outside of the Public Works Manager with any applicable water certifications, and then that's just not appropriate. We need to make some investment. Initially, this position will be underfilled to allow time for our employees to develop and promote within it. We are also recommending a change in the structure with a new position, that would be a facilities and grounds worker position. This would be an entry-level position focusing on custodial care, basic lawn at a lesser level than the maintenance worker. I want to stress that these are new job descriptions, these are not additional people. We are not changing the number. What I will be doing over time is moving, one of the maintenance workers will move in, hopefully into the water service worker when it meets the eligibility and certification requirements. The current vacancy that we have will be filled at the facility and grounds worker. I've got a lot of detailed background information in there in terms of the salary. I will also point out that this is a cost-neutral to our budget, and we focused on that. Another element of the program will be increased hours of our part-time maintenance aid in the summer season to help, but this is our first, often you see me revisit and update job descriptions. This is the first time that it's triggered with a little bit more of an operational change in public works. Also, I don't want to forget it, we have also updated the office assistant job description, which is principally used here only on a part-time and a project temporary basis. Lot of information in the staff report, given the hour, I'm willing to go into a whole lot more detail, or you can let me know if you have any questions, and I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from council? You need formal action by us?
I'd just like to make a comment. I'd just like to thank Steve for really, at all times, bringing our staff up to its highest capacity, coming up with some of these creative ideas that I think is only going to make the town better, because we're so dependent on our staff and all the ex- going to make the town better, because we're so dependent on our staff and all the excellent work they do, so, thanks, Steve.
Well, actually, and this one, I want to say there's a lot of input. Kevin Gaither...
Thanks, Kevin.
...have spent a lot of time, and Julie is helping us in the structure and our format, so... And a lot of input actually came from the employees, it's, you know, they won't see everything they wanted to talk about, but we do take stuff to the employees and, you know, this has changed, so it's a little nerve-wracking for some of them, but it is, in a small agency, I think it's appropriate, and we use a phrase here, circle of work, and I think what we're trying to focus on is what is the current circle of work that we need to do, and looking out three and five years, so how we're gonna get there.
Is there action to be had on this item?
I will make a motion that we approve resolution number 3087-13, Resolution Adopting Updated Position Descriptions for Maintenance Worker 1 and 2, Water System Maintenance Workers 1 and 2, and Creation of Facility and Grounds Worker, and Reactivating the Office Assistant 1 and 2 Positions and Establishing Salary Ranges.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Strategic Plan Fiscal 2011-16 Status Update Report, unless there's really a need for the, is there a need to go through this in detail?
No, and actually, what I would encourage you all to do is, this is a running report, we are in our mid-year of our five-year strategic plan, I feel pretty good about where we're going. As the council knows, this is our work plan that focuses and drives a lot of our budget and other opportunities. I would encourage you to review it, this will get posted on our website. The green highlights reflect the current update, and I would encourage you to, you know, give me a chat or a call if you've got any questions about that. But it is a running update trying to show, and we'll prepare another update a year from now on where we're at and look more comprehensively, probably a year out to start talking about the formal process to begin the update of what would now be the strategic plan 2016-2020, so that's where we'll start focusing.
Great, thank you. Any staff informational reports?
Yes. Just wanted to let the council know that we got the numbers on the trolley ridership for December, and they're up 73% from last December, so...
It's a lot, a lot of new revenue coming in.
Yeah, free, a lot of, a lot of zero times zero. But yeah, the, you know, the campaign to get the word out, the VRAK cards, the publicity, I think it's all worked to have people call the number and make, you know, get the rides, and it was really a popular month, and we anticipate the ridership will continue to be good through the rest of the year, and we should have some, some good numbers year over year.
Do you know yet, was there real use for New Year's Eve? I know we ran extended hours for that, is that something, when we have some of these high-profile holidays?
I wrote it.
So, great, nice, concise answer.
Was anyone else on it?
Excellent, okay. Is that our only staff report, info report?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmembers' reports, and I would just encourage, only if we have something reportable from our meetings, but flood control, there are new 2013 officers, the new chair is Napa Mayor Joel Tackle, Vice Chair Supervisor Bill Dodd. NCTPA, tomorrow we have a meeting, finally in the new facility, so we'll have a report coming out from that. You've already addressed the LAFCO situation, I think, is there any meeting report?
There's nothing else to report.
Upper Valley Waste Management, Councilor Moller, I believe you had a, a meeting?
We did. And after seven months, we actually approved the contract amendment that will grant Yonville $50,000 in waste hauling services, and each one of the other four jurisdictions got the same, and the, they're, they're requesting that only $10,000 of these services be available to each member, Yonville's a member, unless a large amount is mutually agreed upon by the contractor and the member. So if we run cleanup day and it costs $12,000 or $20,000, and we want to do two items, that's something we'll need to negotiate, but it's signed, sealed, and delivered.
Excellent.
Great job.
Thank you. So now we have $4,350,000.
Yes.
Something like that, we're making money tonight. Previous meeting, we spent quite a bit of money, now we're making...
Subtract the $20,000.
Napa County, so no report from the Watershed Information Center Conservancy, Napa County League of Governments, all of us, most of us?
All of us.
All of us met. None of you were introduced?
That's true.
Yes, that's true. Every other new council member was.
After being strongly encouraged to be the vice chair.
Richard said you'd be honored, so...
We, we met at the West End Varasa, and we had Amy Brown, government advocate on, give us a status report on legislative activity, especially post-election. So that changes pretty regularly, but the governor is proposing what he is calling anyway, a balanced budget, which however accurate that is, it's still significantly better than it's been in years past, apparently. We'll see how that actually plays out. I just wanted to also add a thanks to all of the mayors and council members, we had state legislators all supporting the Napa Valley Performing Arts Center at Lincoln Theater, open house, it was held last Friday. I know Commander McCormick addressed that, but it was a very encouraging and impressive community rallying point to see that wonderful Lincoln Theater reopening, so there is a opening night bash on March 23rd, so people should look for opportunities to buy tickets to that and to support that theater. Other announcements, I know we have a couple of community events coming up, Town Manager, do you want to quickly mention the Kiwanis Crab Feed? No? Or the Yonville School Foundation Pasta Feed coming up in...
Yeah, I know, we don't have another meeting before that. On Friday, February the 1st, at 6:00 PM in the Yonville Community Center, is the annual Yonville School Pasta Feed that is essentially entirely underwritten by Wrench Market. Every dollar that you pay to get in or do at the raffle, or sell an auction, goes to the, to the school, to the school, and most of the money is going to the school foundation to help keep the doors at Yonville open. And we also have the annual teacher bake-off auction, which directly goes to buy supplies in their classrooms. So tickets are $5 for kids and $10 for adults, best deal in all of Yonville, all-you-can-eat. And tickets should be available starting on, UPS tells me they'll be here on Thursday, so they'll be available on Friday, definitely at the deli and the school office, so please purchase ahead of time.
But Mayor, just briefly with regard to the Kiwanis Crab Feed, I will point out the generosity of the community has been very strong and the event is already sold out.
Very good. The last announcement I'll make, just because I anticipated involving other members of the council and potentially town staff, but I was sworn in as an honorary commander of the Air Force up at Travis Air Force Base last Friday, and I am partnered with Colonel Mark Weber of the 60th Maintenance Wing, so it's a community outreach effort where we go to Travis and learn more about the, the family that is at Travis Air Force Base, and we bring the Colonel and others from Travis to come here to our community and, and show them kind of what we do here and how we can be better partners, so we'll see how that develops.
Cool.
I think there's one more announcement.
One more announcement, Councilor Hall?
I believe there's, the Chamber Dinner is on the 23rd, which is next Wednesday, so I don't know exactly how to get tickets or anything like that, but I'm sure if you call the Chamber, they'd be happy to get you involved.
There you go, it's on their website as well.
Yes.
I think.
I think you're right.
With that, what else do we have? Anything? No?
Future agenda.
Future agenda items, we see them there. Closed session?
Can I ask?
No...
No closed session.
Before you move to that?
For future agenda items?
Yes. The mayor brought it up, maybe unwittingly, but I had an individual who lives on Pedroni Street bring up the parking on Pedroni and Washington intersection. First of all, fairly recently, we put in the no parking on the corner, which they were tremendously appreciative of and said it's really helped coming Pedroni looking south, but the looking north is still a major problem. And I remember years ago, I mean, Cindy was on the council when this was discussed about literally painting the stripes to make it parallel parking in front of Jessup, because you can't see around that corner. So I would at least ask the staff to take a look at that, and we don't have to, we don't have to address it now, but...
Just so I make sure I'm clarifying.
They do recall that meeting where it was said that was going to become parallel parking, and that was the original approval for that project.
We'll review the project approval, but you're also referring to, I'll make sure the visual of the, I mean, it's the coming out, so it would be the north...
I'm, I'm pointed west, and I want to turn north on Washington Street.
The northeast corner of the intersection coming from Pedroni, okay. We'll review that.
That would be appreciated, thank you.
I will welcome a motion, I do ask that we adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Mayor Del Britton. With that, I would welcome a motion for adjournment to our next regularly scheduled council meeting of Tuesday, February 5th at 6:00 PM.
Move to adjourn?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.